Good evening and welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Agenda. I'm going to start with the land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are on the unceded land of the Spokane people and that these lands were once the major trading center for the Spokanes as they shared this place and welcome other tribes through their relations, history, trade, and ceremony. We also want to acknowledge that the land holds the spirit of the place through its knowledge, culture, and all the original people since time immemorial. As we take a moment to consider the impacts of colonization, may we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of the Spokanes and their relatives. As we work together making decisions that benefit all, may we do so as one heart, one mind, and one spirit. We are grateful to be on the shared land of the Spokane people and ask for the support of their ancestors in all relations. We ask that you recognize these injustices that forever changed the lives of the Spokane people and all their relatives. We agree to work together to stop all acts of continued injustices toward Native Americans and all our relatives. It is time for reconciliation. We must act upon the truths and take actions that will create restorative justice for all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
President.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all councilmembers are present.
Thank you. We have some special guests. We have some Eagles in the house tonight. Eagles are getting a personal welcome. I have a very special salutation. If I could have President Sherri McMahon and Jody come up. Is Jody in the crowd? You girls can come up, but I should probably have the whole team stand if you guys wouldn't mind. I started singing "Fly Like an Eagle" today, then I stopped. Saluting the Eastern Washington Women's Basketball Team for the 2023-2024 Big Sky Championship. Whereas not since 1987 has the EW Women's Basketball Team been to the NCAA Tournament. And whereas in a victory over Northern Arizona, 73-63, in the Big Sky Conference Tournament, elevated the EW Women's Basketball Team to the Big Dance. And whereas led by Coach Jody Gleason, the Lady Eagles had a dynamic start of the season, 13 and 0, making the team a top pick in a coaches' poll teams to win the Big Sky Championship. And whereas breakout player Jamie Loria was named as Big Sky Conference preseason MVP by ESPN, ranking third in the Big Sky Conference for assists. And whereas this Eastern Washington Women's Basketball Team has put together the greatest Women's Basketball season in the school's history, finishing their season 29 and 6. Now therefore I, Betsy Wilkerson, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, hereby salute the Eastern Washington Women's Basketball Team for their outstanding accomplishment of going to the NCAA Tournament and being our region's Big Sky Champions. I, Betsy Wilkerson, Spokane City Council President, do hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Spokane to be affixed this 29th day of April. (Applause). I know it. I know it. I know it. We'll get that. We'll do a quick photo. These people love photos.
We get everyone?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Yes. I think most of y'all are tall enough. Except for you, maybe. Awesome. Come on, come on.
Go Eagles!
Thank you, Lisa. Perfect. Please have a couple of words. Chair Wilkerson, city councilmembers. Did I do that right? Are we good? Chair Wilkerson, city councilmembers, thank you so much for this tremendous honor. This is the most diverse, talented, smart, athletic group of women in the Spokane region, and I am honored to be with them today. Woo-hoo! And our amazing coach.
Thank you so much for having us. Thank you, President McMahon. We have an amazing female leader at Eastern who just is a spark and a shining light for what great leadership looks like. And these ladies deserve all the credit. They just came out and were amazing this year and worked extremely hard and bought into what we were doing, and we just chipped away and had this historic season that will go down in history as one of the best ever at Eastern Washington and in the region. So we're super proud of them. Appreciate all of you. Anything else?
Go Eagles!
Go Eagles! (Applause).
We just wanted you to know that you are part of Spokane, and we are absolutely proud to claim you as such. So again, we're looking forward to next year?
Yes.
All right, then. Hope to see you back. All right. Thank you so much for making your way down to City Hall and joining us this evening. All righty, let's get to the legislative business at hand.
Let me do the sorting.
Yes. Mr. Jacoby, you want to tell us about our sorting tonight, since there's a number of people signed up?
Yep. So we have 23 individuals sign up for open forum tonight. Since open forum is limited to 20 folks per meeting, I am going to pull down the randomizer and randomize this list, and the top 20 will get to speak tonight. So pulling down the formula, copying it and pasting the values, and I'm going to sort smallest to largest. So it looks like those who will be able to speak tonight are everybody who's made the list up until Tanya, Dream, and Jack will, absent people dropping off, not be on tonight's list, as they have already spoken this month.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. Just to start off, first of all, in order that evidence and expression of opinion be included in the record and that decorum befitting a deliberative process be maintained, no modes of expression, including but not limited to demonstrations, banners, signs, applause, profanity, vulgar language, or personal insults, will be permitted to prevent disruption of council meetings. We'll have our first public comment. Mr. Jacoby? Let's go ahead and approve a consent agenda. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, can we take 1 and 14 separately?
Can I get approval for the consent?
We have testimony.
We will take 1 and 14 separately. We'll go with public testimony. I want y'all to know how many bosses I have up here. You think I'm in charge. The first one up is Will Hewlings, Dennis Flynn, and Justice for All, and you have three minutes.
Will?
And this is on the consent agenda.
My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown. So I'm going to be, I'm basically against OPR 2024-0315. I can't find my speech, but basically, if you look at the list of vehicles, there's a lot of Ford F-150 Lightning. Now, obviously, I hope you guys are doing your research, because New York Times, I sent this to Councilman Bingle, but basically their sales are lacking, they're having a lot of issues with the Lightnings. The other problem, we don't really have infrastructure here in Spokane for these Lightnings. I mean, so, you know, basically, I looked it up. You could buy a stock F-150 Lightning for $54,000. You could buy a stock F-150 gas-powered pickup truck, brand new, for $33,000, or you could buy a F-250 diesel for $48,000. So why is it that the Water Department, Waste Management, and I forgot who else, why is it that they're trying to push through these electric vehicles that don't work up here in the Pacific Northwest? Just think about February when we had five-degree temperatures. We had SPD out there doing the Martin Luther King Jr. Parade with their SPD vehicles idling because it was so cold. Imagine if they were all Ford Lightnings, they wouldn't be probably even sitting there running, because they wouldn't be able to hold a charge. So it's just disturbing that, you know, you're trying to push this through. I'm all for these semi-trucks and the Peterbilt's and all that stuff, but when it comes to these electric vehicles, they're pretty much worthless. Why not push for some hybrids? I'd be all for that, but thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Will. Please, please, no clapping or applauding in the chambers. Dennis Flynn, welcome.
Thank you, Council President. Council, Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. Regarding 2024-0315 for the vehicles, I see that 2.3 million of this is for what I assume is either garbage trucks or recycling trucks, and as I've explained here before, you would be amazed at just how much we put in our blue bins that actually is not recycled but burned up instead. And I maintain you should be honest with the public about how wasteful it is to send out what is basically a second garbage pickup for our recycling. I mean, it already means so little to the solid waste department, they cut pickup in half, without cutting our bill at all, I will remind you. So given our $50 million budget hole, let me put this in perspective for you by using the four trucks at $575,000 each that make up that 2.3 million of the 7.4 authorization. That is 4.6% of the $50 million budget hole that wouldn't have to be spent if we'd simply be honest and inform all of us that recycling is a complete waste of our tax dollars and instruct us to collect our own metals, take them to our local recycling business, and get enough to buy a six-pack. See how I figured is if I can spend half an hour to come up with an idea that covers 4.6% of the funding gap, maybe the mayor, the department heads, and you all could come together for an afternoon retreat and find $100 million in savings and propose a reduction in property taxes. Don't get me wrong, I know it's not that simple, but guess what it is if you don't make all the very well-paid mayor, department heads, and their underlings go through the exercise of finding cuts? It's impossible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Justice for All, and then Dream, and then we'll have Sherri Burnett.
Justice, if you're online, can you hit star 3? I don't see Justice.
Okay, we'll go with Dream.
Dream, if you're online, can you hit star 3?
Point of information, which one is this on?
The consent agenda.
Yeah. Well, good evening, City Council. City Council President, I'm here to talk about a couple items on the consent agenda. First of all, is the funding, continual refunding of the track shelter. Y'all had approved a four-month contract with the ability to cut it off early in the year, at the beginning, earlier than that, a few, about the beginning of the year, and I was just, what are your plans for the Trent Shelter? Right? You've had four months to do something about it. We haven't seen movement on that. We have, you've extended this by a month, it looks like. Are we planning on shutting this down? Where are these people going? I think I'd be very interested to know, and a lot of people would. We're spending almost $3,000 per person, per night, in this shelter to house these people, and that's a lot to put on the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Dream. Sherri Burnett?
Yes, I'm Sherri Barnett. I live in Spokane, Madam President Wilkerson, and all members of the City Council. You know, I really, I'm just kind of, in a non-technical way, echoing some of the things that I've already heard, but this push toward electric vehicles and the greater expense and given a big emergency where we had lost electrical power, where would we be? With gas-powered vehicles, and you are much safer, and we do have a possibility of having emergencies like that. The other thing is, we're not in a time where we have a lot of money. We need to watch the pennies. The other thing is, insurance is going up drastically, so when you increase the price of those vehicles, you're increasing the price of your insurance. I think in all things, we, the taxpayers, are asking you to please be fiscally responsible. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri. I'll ask again if Justice for All is on the line?
Justice, if you're online, can you hit star 3?
Not seeing him. Any council commentary? Shall we take number one first? Council commentary on consent agenda item number one. Councilmember Cathcart, do you want to lead up?
No commentary.
So we are voting currently only on number one, which is the preapproval for the Fleet Services to purchase the 34 vehicles. All those in favor of number one, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No?
No.
Councilmember Bingle?
Nope.
I think that's a no. Thank you. That passes 5, 2, 1. Let's jump over to number 14, since that wants to be taken separately as well. The Contract Amendment and Extension with the Salvation Army for Operation of the Trent Resource Center. Any council commentary on that? Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I think to the specific question about, you know, plans to wind down track, have been reviewing some potential timelines. We did get state funding this legislative session to help support a wind-down plan with track. Right now, it is just kind of, again, thinking about what that exact closure date looks like, but we've seen a lot of success with the scatter site model. That will, I think, kind of help support the wind-down of track as well as working to stand up an actual navigation center.
Great. Thank you. All those in favor of item number 14, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Councilmember Bingle? That's a yes. 6 to 1, thank.
Yes, aye.
It was a yes.
We can barely hear you, Councilmember Bingle.
So that was a yes. Thank you. Now, the consent agenda items for the rest of them, here and none other to be pulled out. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions, the consent agenda is passed. We have a number of resolutions and ordinance before us tonight. I am going to take Council President privilege, and I'm going to start with Resolution Number 044, 0044, and that is the resolution regarding the increase in the property tax levy. Public comment? I'll start with John.
Do you want me to read it first?
Please go ahead and read it, Ms. Fister.
Resolution Number 2024-0044, as amended, a resolution of the City of Spokane proposing an increase in the regular property tax levy beginning in 2025 in an amount exceeding the limitations of Chapter 84.55 RCWW to provide funding for community safety, providing for the submission of the proposition of the qualified electors of the city at a special election, requesting that the Spokane County Auditor hold a special election for the proposition on August 6, 2024, and providing for other matters properly related thereto.
We have John Alder, Jacob Kane, and Derek Azaro.
Good evening, John Alder, I live in Spokane. I'm not sure which one, I saw two public safety ones, but I just want to say, as far as spending on the public safety, let's don't just look for short-term solutions like police and jails. Let's also remember that we need to spend more on social programs than we do on law enforcement. And one place we can start that is the juvenile rehabilitation. They're young enough and also at a point where you can influence them to do something else in their life. So you can have education, anger management, and some education and job training for the future. Also, just don't forget, we can also have more rehabilitation programs. And, you know, anyway, the main thing is just have some long-term programs as well as the short-term, buying jails and places as well to solve this problem. Police in jail can come in handy for some people, but we also can also have social programs to help people reduce their anger, have homes to live in, have jobs to work, and that too can also help public safety, because they won't have a reason to be angry and cause the problems that get caused by that sometimes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Jacob?
Jacob Kane, if you're online, can you hit star 3? Nope.
Next, we'll have Derek Azaro and then Dave M. Derek? Welcome, Derek.
Derek Azaro, District 1. I guess my only comment on this is, have we defined how you're going to spend this money, or is this, you're just going to vote on it as a package, and there's really no definition how it's going to be spent? Right along with, like, you shot down the jail, but there was no definition on that. So this is, it looks like kind of an open book, just to raise the taxes on the property owners, when they're already kind of drowning in taxes. You just keep going and going with this money, and, you know, you have to realize that really the property taxes, people pay property taxes, they're the ones paying all the bills in the city. You've got over 3,000 nonprofits in the city that bring in $4 billion a year with over 28,000 employees, and they don't pay any property taxes, they don't pay any real payroll taxes for the state. You know, you just can't keep going, digging, 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 deeper and deeper into the homeowners, because they're the ones really paying all the bills. So I'm basically, I'm opposed to this, because you need to define out how you're going to buy this money up. If it's for, you know, good causes, good job, but if you're not, it's just an open book, here's a checkbook, let's spend it like we like. I'm against it. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek. Dave M.?
Go ahead, Dave. You're unmuted.
Thank you, Jacoby. Well, here we go again. Another Lisa Brown tax increase for all homeowners and more. This is nothing new with Lisa Brown. Brown voted for the largest property tax in Washington State history when she was in the legislature. Now Brown is threatening us that we will lose police, fire, along with other emergency and public services unless we pass this outrageous property tax increase. This would be the largest tax increase ever in Spokane. This is the Brown way. The Brown campaign, and Brown herself campaigned about the city's budget, now she wants you to pay 200 million to fix a $50 million deficit. This looks like Brown wants the additional 150 million so she can keep her tax and spend agenda going. We must say no. There are many proposed tax increases coming to your ballots from property to schools to parks and more in the fall. The majority on the council, along with the current mayor, are not concerned about us. We must say no. No more. Work with what you're already taking from us and get your house in order. Thank you, and just a quick note, Councilmember Dillon, your mic is much, much better.
Thank you, Dave. Next is Dennis Flynn, and then Dream.
Thank you, Council President Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. So now we have, first sentence isn't appropriate since we moved the order. So why is this in August and the other one moved to November? Is it to, it can't be to save us money, because we're going to have a special election anyway? But don't special elections cost us more money, and aren't we in a budget hole? And this is a very substantial and impactful piece of code here that we're talking about, isn't it? I mean, you're talking about raising property taxes on average, $400 per house or more, with $35 a month, $1 a day, however you want to think about it, right? So what do you, by the way, what do you think that's going to do for rents? And just what have you done to cut expenses? What is the headcount applied by the city? Not counting frozen positions, because they're only frozen until you thaw them out with our tax dollars? Have you eliminated any positions this year? Has any department been identified to make even a 1% year-over-year budget decrease? Has any department been identified to make a 0% year-over-year budget increase? In other words, no budget increase? Has even one, just one frivolous department initiative been eliminated? So going back to having this special election for this in August, why did you move the parks special election? I mean, if you have to mail out ballots for this levy, why not split that across two? Why split that across two elections? Why not keep them both in August? Or even better, why not save us 100% of the cost of the special election and put them both in November to show you care, at least in a small way, about the efficient use of our money? Could it be the realm of the deceiver, a sleight of hand, so the uninformed voter is caught unaware? Or maybe it actually is in our interest, maybe I should think of this differently. And the city tax revenue increases because the safety operation tax levy passes will mean an extra $3 million to the Parks Department, because our city charter specifies that parks get a certain budget percentage. And so you plan to reduce the scope of the Parks levy to remove that extra $3 million they're going to be getting. So I hope to hear a council comment after public testimony is over, assuring us that the reason for having the August election for this is because then you'll reduce the amount of the Parks levy in November, because if not, you're Because if not, you're just showing us you think you know better when at the end of the day, you're no better buttoning your shirt and tying your shoes than we are. Please do better than smoke and mirrors. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Next we have Dream.
So the city's in a financial crisis and there's a public safety levy coming up. And when we're talking about this public safety levy, I outlined in testimony a few weeks ago about a lot of the inherent problems of our police department. There's no independent oversight at all. The Office of Police Ombudsman has to go through the police chief in order to publish anything. There's no independent oversight in terms of independent prosecutions of officer misconduct. And there has never been a financial audit of this $100 million department. There are incredible problems that this city needs to solve and it needs money to do so. We are in a budget crisis. And the entire amount of this budget could easily be spent on everything but the police department as outlined in this, in the language of this levy, and it would all be going to do good things. If that is not going to happen, if we're spending any money on the police at all in this, it needs, the first dollar spent need to be to audit this massive department. And that will probably save us money because the money spent to audit it will probably come back in inefficiencies that are inherent of all unaudited large budgets. And we can use that money for other things. But the first dollars that get spent out of this levy for police need to go towards independent oversight, independent accountability, and independent financial oversight as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dream. Jacob, are you online?
Jacob, if you're online, can you please hit star three?
No, any council commentary? Councilmember Bingo?
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a lot of commentary on this. So a couple of things. First off, I heard reference to the November ballot measure for the Parks Department. We actually switched that at our briefing. There was an amendment put forward that moves it to February. So it's not even a November ballot measure anymore, it's been moved to February. And I didn't see that in the, in the title, but that was the amendment that, that was made. But yeah, I've got, I've got a number of issues with this one. Obviously, you know, with the budget being where it is, the deficit that we're facing, you know, the, the city is, is facing a lot of the same financial hardships that everybody else is. The problem that I have with this, well, I have several problems with this, is that it's not really well defined, right? And now the thing is, is that I say that only because the opponents of the jail measure came and said, it's not well defined, right? Now, both of them have, you know, obvious open space to give some needed flexibility to the city in how it spends the dollars. But proponents of this levy were opponents of the jail measure because there wasn't a plan. It wasn't well defined. It was going to get us a jail, right? I don't know what more of a plan we needed besides the fact that we were going to get a jail. This one right here is going to go to plug budget holes. Now, the problem is, is that again, plugging budget holes is not a public safety levy. This is a general fund levy, okay? And it needs to be understood that you can put all the guardrails in the world on these dollars. We could pass resolution after resolution after resolution. It doesn't actually matter because we could just take the dollars away from police or fire that are just general fund dollars and move them into something else. No matter what we do here, we cannot guarantee that these dollars are going to be for public safety purposes only. They, it is going to be a $40 million boost to the general fund. That is very important to understand because what's going to happen is our police and our firefighters have been put in this awkward position of being told we're going to cut 50 police officers and 25 firefighters unless you, two organizations, go out and support this levy. And so they've been put into a rock and a hard place where many of them are also going to feel the sting of the property tax increase that happens to them. But do I want to pay an extra 60, you know, 30, 40, 50, $60 a month extra? Or do I want to lose my job? I don't think that's been fair to them. I think they're being used as a shield for, again, a, a general fund levy. And I think it's been misleading in this way. I'm frustrated as well because we as citizens and the people that I represent in my district are having to find ways to, to pinch pennies. And in this proposal, nothing has come forward with any substantive cut on the, on the city's behalf. Now, what we're saying there then is that in a $1.2 billion budget, there's no government waste, which is absolutely incredibly wrong. And while cuts might come later or efficiencies and those kinds of things, it needs to be put together as we're voting for it, as we're bringing it to the forefront. And Councilmember Cathcart brought this up earlier, that we can't get the information that we need to be able to vote on this in good conscience. I think there's a lot of things that are wrong with this outside of the fact that we do have a budget hole we need to, we need to fill. But there's a number of reasons here, if you want to talk about the politics of it. Again, jail measure versus this, what's different? Probably just the people proposing it. Where is the city going to be cutting or finding efficiencies to reduce government waste? We haven't been given that. Police and fire are being used as cover for this proposal. And it's actually not a public safety levy, it's a general levy. There's a lot of things that are wrong with this. And for those reasons, I can't support it tonight.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingo. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, and I think Councilmember Bingo hit the nail on the head. This is literally a proposal that you have to vote on to know what's in it. And that's really, really unfortunate and frustrating. And there is no accountability built into it. This is a permanent levy, which means it will never go away. And if, if and when the money gets diverted away from its intent, there is absolutely no provision for the public to hold City Hall or the electeds accountable to those decisions. And so we could have chosen to do a 10-year, a 20-year, some shorter term. We could have chosen to actually put specifics in this. But we did not because of a number of factors that still confound me, frankly. I'm still trying to get access to line item data as to what would be spent out of this, how, what years it's programmed, all of that. I don't have it. I don't have it. I can't make a decision if I don't have it. Now, by contrast, this is our Parks Plan. You'll notice the thick, many, many, many pages, okay? Two years to put this together. This is one-fifth the cost of this levy that is being proposed right now. And yet we are punting on a well-thought-out plan that would significantly help our constituents, my constituents in Northeast Spokane. I don't know if you've ever visited a park in Northeast Spokane, but we absolutely need investments to help make those better. And unfortunately, this is now being punted to February and who knows beyond that. We're going to ask some people and say, when do you want it? And that's when we're going to stick it on a ballot, which I'm really, really frustrated over. Whether it's Mini Haha Park, which we've been able to designate as a major park, the first major park in North Spokane, whether it's Harmon Park that needs some significant reinvestment, or whether it's, it's a number of other of our smaller neighborhood parks around Northeast or the rest of the city, quite frankly. Okay, we are bypassing that for this. So within this, what guarantees do we have that this money will stay where it's supposed to go? The new spending, okay? The additional spending, not just plugging the holes from bad decisions out of this building over the last several years. No one person or group or political persuasion is at fault. We've all made mistakes and made some bad decisions. I'll admit to it, although I think I've been teensy bit better than some others, but that's my opinion. I, and so we need to actually buckle down and look at real cuts. Not one cut has been proposed. I keep hearing, oh, they're coming. We just did a quarterly SBO, we could have considered cuts then. Nope. We've got a half-year SBO coming. I hope we're going to have cuts then, but guess what? We can't defer this until then. We have to make this decision literally tonight. And we have not been provided the right information. Now, beyond that is the cost. I will tell you personally, I cannot afford this, okay? I cannot afford this. If I cannot afford this, how am I supposed to put this on a ballot to penalize my constituents, many of whom make a lot less? How do I do that in good conscience, in good faith? Especially when we have shown absolutely no interest in fiscal responsibility. We have added programs, we have added positions in the last three, four months. We have added things, we have not taken anything away. We have not made a one difficult decision yet. And yet we're going to go to the voters and say, we don't want to do the hard thing. We want you to just give us more of your hard-earned money and we promise we will make good decisions. I'm sorry, but that is not good enough. I have been promised so many things since I was put in this position that have not been followed through. And I'm not talking about this administration or anything else, across the board. I just know how government works, okay? Promises are fickle things and they usually don't get followed through on. So I am extremely concerned about the impacts this is going to have on my constituents, on their affordability. I'm concerned about the rent increases this will create. I am concerned about all of the impacts this is going to have across our community. And for what? What is the actual increase in service we are getting that is going to be so dramatically different than today? We will tell you that we are doing more today than we can afford, and that is true. That is absolutely true. But we're not going to do that much more with this. And if you think the service right now is amazing, great. But you're going to get about the same of what you're getting now. It'll be slightly improved, okay? There's no, and I can't tell you within this, how much money is going to go to pay for officers in Northeast, officers in the South Hill, officers in Northwest. I, I can't tell you how much is going to go or when it's going to go to support fire. I can't tell you, you know, any of those specifics. Why? Because they have not been provided to us. We have to vote for this to know what's in it. And I cannot do that. So I will be opposing this tonight, and I'm sure there's going to be a whole lot more to come in the next three, four months.
Councilmember Klitschke?
Thank you. I think that Councilmembers Bingo and Cathcart have done a good job outlining what's frustrating about our situation right now. But it really is our situation right now. I don't think any of us expected to be dealing with such a huge budget deficit as we found out in the last three months that we have. But the truth is, we have to deal with it. And it's pretty frustrating that they're planning a park levy while the administration is quietly covering up holes in the budget with planning to not make payments on debt and using one-time funds for reoccurring costs. And so we know that's happening now and we really do need to fix that before we can figure out how to make investments in parks and other things. Because right now, if we pass the Parks Levy but we don't pass this, we will not be able to afford to implement everything in the Parks Levy. Our budget is complicated and it is very frustrating that we're in this situation. We have to move this quickly, but when you're in a hole, you need to stop digging. And that's where this takes us. There have been cuts. And if you're paying attention to some of our briefing and study sessions, we have discussed some of those cuts. IT was looking at $750,000 a year in savings. We canceled this year's Fire Academy, which threatens our buffer for, and puts us in potential situation where we'll have more police or fire overtime in the future. But this, this is a real situation. We are getting more service than we are paying for right now. And when I was out running up for office and doorbilling, people were asking me for more. They wanted to bring back neighborhood resource officers. They wanted more traffic patrols. They wanted traffic cameras. They wanted sidewalks. They wanted intersection safety. They wanted compassionate solutions to addiction and mental health problems and homelessness. There's things in this package that address all of those issues and increased police accountability. There's increased budget for the Police Ombudsman Office, which is important to me. But it isn't going to be easy, and that's why it's going before voters. We're not putting this before ourselves and deciding today that we are going to raise property taxes. This is going before voters. We're putting this on the ballot for you to decide. I was out there campaigning and you asked me for everything that's in this package. But none of us knew where we were financially and how much it was going to cost. So there'll be education campaigns giving you more information about that in the coming weeks. We've seen a lot more recently this week than we had before. But it's going to be a community-wide decision. And I'm for putting it on the ballot because we're in a serious situation and we have to be serious about how we deal with it.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, thank you so much. And, you know, and I, the comparisons to the jail is interesting, you know, when you're looking at this really as a community investment. In terms of the numbers, the jail was ultimately $1.7 billion. It was significantly, I, yeah, can't compare. But I also think too, you know, just to echo Councilmember Klitschke, you know, when you think about the potential disaster scenarios, canceling the Fire Academy when we know based on, again, the last decade, the increase of wildfire risk and what that means for the city. And I can't live with that. I also think too, to some earlier discussion about the OPO Office, the Office of Police Ombudsman, that was cut. That was cut in the last budget. So this would help restore and expand funding, which I think is really, really important for building trust in this community. What would happen if this didn't pass? More than 170 city employees would lose their jobs. I am really sorry we're at this point, but here we are. And there's been red lights that have been blinking for a long time. That 2024 is going to be a really, really hard year. So again, in terms of accountability and guardrails of what's in this, you know, we've had study sessions, there's been town halls, there's another one tomorrow evening. It's going to be a virtual link, there's more information on the city website. We are the accountability for what's in here. And you are too. We're going to really be careful about how we spend in this proposal. And I think too, one thing that we heard really clearly in the town halls was the need for safe streets infrastructure, for traffic calming. Those really do fit into this bigger proposal. We're going to make sure that we're in there. And I look forward to the next four months and talking to you all more.
Councilman McCathcart?
Yeah, I just want to add one, one piece, talking about the cutting the Fire Academy. And I, I can't speak specifically to fire, but I will say, have heard information that we are struggling right now with police recruitment because of the fears over the 50 firefighter, or excuse me, the 50 police officers that would be let go if this doesn't pass. And so, you know, the way usually those things work, it's last in, first out. And so it is a struggle right now and we are 10 short of where we need to be with our existing allotment of officers. And so this is having, already having an effect. Those threats of, of laying off our officers is already having an effect. And so that's important to, to keep in mind.
Councilmember Luizapone?
Yeah, I know there's a lot of concerns over raising taxes, no one wants to do that. But this is really going to voters and asking voters, what do you want for services from the city? Do, costs have gone up just like any other business has gone up? And we have to go to voters to ask you if you want to pay for those services? We're finally getting an approach that handles both community safety and a budget that handles it. And I really want to appreciate Mayor Brown and her administration for being transparent, showing us the impact of our financial, of the current state of our financial situation and what impact would have if we go forward. And for offering a vision and a plan that not only addresses our budget deficit, but invests in our community. We've been asking for the two years that I've been on council for the full financial impact. And we've been told, you know, it's okay, like we'll just spend the money here. We haven't ever gotten the full picture. And within the first months here with the new administration, we did get the full picture, a full audit of our finances and saw how bad the situation was. I know that we're hearing from some council members tonight that there's potential places to make cuts. But those council members have been on this council and have not offered places to make cuts in the last few years. We've had a conservative administration that has done everything they've done to try to make cuts. There's really not more places to make cuts. I think it's time that, to balance the budget, like we've heard, it's 170 city employees. And that's not just 100 city people, 170 people in City Hall. But those have to be real cuts to our community with police and firefighters that could jeopardize safety in our community. So I appreciate that we're both being transparent and giving voters the options of what they want to vote for, but also investing and making those investments in our community. It's about dressing places up with tremendous wildfire risk, like we heard about Lake Top Valley and Five Mile. We do have specifics too in this proposal that'll come out more and more as we learn and educate voters about it. But it's about replacing an estimated 18 large fire apparatuses, 21 light-duty vehicles. It creates a plan for police vehicle capital. It creates a plan for police vehicle capital replacement. We've, for the two years I've been here, we've had no way of funding our new police vehicles except for one-time stimulus money from the federal government. And police have told us that's jeopardizing their ability to respond to incidences. And this creates a plan for how do we replace our police capital fleet as investments in our safety in our parks. And it comes with accountability with police too by investments in the Police Ombudsman's Office. So I really appreciate the leadership on this and will continue to educate voters about the options that they have in front of them.
Councilmember McCattart.
Yeah, I mean, despite the fancy statement that he has written up, that is just completely crazy. We have had no transparency in this process. We still haven't even received the actual documentation spreadsheets, which, by the way, I filed a public records request today for all of it. So it will become public eventually, despite the best efforts of the administration. It's incredibly frustrating that they would not share that information. I have asked multiple, multiple times. And I don't think there's a budget that has ever come before you, Zach, that you did not love and wanted to vote for. So to suggest that I am the reason for this deficit, which the mayor has already done in one meeting, is the most insane thing. And I challenge our media folks who are sitting here, and I don't do this often, but I'm gonna challenge you. Go back, watch some of our meetings, go through, look at the documents, and you report whether or not I am the reason for this deficit. Okay, I've heard it from Councilmember Zappone. I've heard it from Mayor Brown. I challenge you to take a look at that. Thank you.
I'm not gonna get into the back and forth. Councilmember Bingle, you have a comment?
Yeah, thank you. So I don't believe Councilmember Zappone is in on all the meetings that I'm in on, but I could be wrong, but I'm not wrong. And so I've had many serious discussions with police, fire, just about every department here in the city about moving forward. There do need to be serious cuts. And what are the things that we can do? And how can we do it without losing 170 employees? By the way, 170 employees, I'm learning this for the first time tonight, that it's 170 employees. I've heard 50 police officers and 25 firefighters. But 170 is a new number for me, which also goes to show that I'm not in every meeting. But as Councilmember Zappone brought up about conservative administrations in years past, if I'm not mistaken, it is the city council that controls the purse strings. And if we're talking about conservative versus liberal on this council, how could Michael and I pass a budget at all with two votes? In no way could we pass a budget. And I didn't want to go here. You went here, so I'll dance. But this is, it's a crazy statement to make. And honestly, it is easy to make new investments in new programs. It's easy to fill budget holes when you're asking for $40 million, right? It's not as if it's really hard to make investments in new things when you get 40 million new dollars, if that's what the voters decide to go with. So a couple of things there that were just absolutely incorrect. We do have hard discussions with everybody as fiduciaries for the city. And in the end, Michael and I sit here as everybody gets to see, whenever there's a split vote, it's a 5-2. And in no way could we pass a budget on our own.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. Last comment, and then I'm gonna close this out.
Yeah, I do want to clarify, I did not blame any council members for the budget. I said that you have not offered cuts in the budget previously, which is different. So, but I do want to say that information was sent to council last Friday. Councilmember Bingle got the same email that I got with the information that contained the cuts in it. So that information was shared with you, Councilmember Bingle.
Thank you all. We're ready to take the vote. I just want to say that no matter who was gonna be sitting in the mayor's chair, the conversation was already being had about a levy. So this is not a partisan thing. There was a deficit last year. We knew it was coming. We talked about a cliff, 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 cliff. And so whether it was our former mayor or our current mayor, a levy was gonna be before the people. What we are voting on tonight is to put it on the ballot. The decision will be yours. Information will be coming. You can do your own additional research. You can show up at meetings. You can get all the information. We are happy to share. But tonight, we're only voting to put it on the ballot. No more commentary, prepare to vote. 5-2, thank you very much. Now, at this point, we're gonna hop back up to Resolution 2024-0041, and that is the appointment of the council of the members who will be writing the pro and con statements. Is there any commentary from?
I'll read the resolution. Resolution number 2024-0041, a resolution regarding the appointment of for and against committee members relating to a Proposition Number One on the August 6, 2024 special election ballot regarding a measure proposing an increase in the regular property tax levy for community safety beginning in 2025.
We have Derek Azaro, Dave M., and Sherry Barnett.
I pass five to rules.
Thank you. Dave M.?
Dave, there you go. Go ahead when you're ready. You're unmuted. Go ahead, Dave. Still not hearing you yet.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Once again, it's tax, 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 tax. Councilman Zappone, you need to be honest with the public along with the other council members. The public needs to know what this is being spent on, where every dime is going in this proposal. This is another attempt of the majority on this city council to campaign for what they want. They said no campaigning, they...
Dave, we are actually voting on the committee members for the pro and con of the levy.
Okay, my point on that would be that if we were not proposing this levy, if we were working within our budget, we wouldn't need to have this committee. I don't know what the cost of this committee is. I don't think there's anything that says what the cost will be. But that would be another savings as to not be spending more money for campaigning. And that's what this really comes down to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President. Maybe Jacoby could just describe really quickly the purpose of this.
Yeah. Per state law, when a jurisdiction in the state of Washington adds a ballot measure to a ballot, so this council has the authority to do that, we are then required to appoint for and against committees. I do my best over the time period that I'm given that this is coming down the pike to recruit pro and con committee members. So if any of you in the audience would be willing to serve on a pro or con committee in the future for a ballot measure, please reach out to me. I always try to do a media blast and make the pitch at council meetings as much as I can. But those pro and con committees are no more than three individuals, and they write the for and against statement that appears in the county's voter pamphlet that goes out to everybody for the election.
Well, thank you for explaining that, Jacoby, if I'm still on.
Yep, go ahead.
I just wanted to say thank you for explaining that, if I'm still on the line.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Sherry?
Sherry Barnett, President Wilkerson, and all members of the city council. I'm not really sure that you're going to want me to speak on this because I actually am against the further taxing. I really feel that I have been coming here a long time, and I see so many apartment buildings. And if you look through this city, the things that are beautiful, the things that are very expensive, these sports arenas, all the riverfront park, the schools, but the little, and the beautiful new condos and apartment buildings, but the little homes, especially in my area, you're gonna see a lot of moss on the roofs and cracks in their foundations. These people are struggling.
And Sherry, thank you, but we are just voting on the pro.
I know, I'm just a little off. Thanks.
Thank you. Any council commentary? I will say that there are two people. Councilmember Bingle, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to say on the pro-con statements or pro-con committees, I don't have any problems with these at all. These are helpful tools for the voters when it goes into the voters' pamphlet. It's citizen input to help, say, the pro or the con of whether or not something should be adopted or enacted. So I'm happy to vote for both of these things. The one thing I would encourage everybody in here to do is we advertised these positions, and we didn't, we didn't fill three slots for some pretty intense discussions. We couldn't get three pro or con on either of these, I believe. And so if something like this is something you're passionate about, and I hear a lot of passion here tonight, where people are very against something or very for something, I would encourage you to pay attention when we're putting these out because Jacoby does his best to run people down and find people where they are so that we can get people on them. But if you are interested in being a part of that process, we could really use as many people as possible to accurately get that information out.
Thank you. Councilmember Zappone?
Yeah, I support these. I just can't help pointing out that Councilmember Bingle and Councilmember Cathcart did not choose to be on the con committees for these. So as much as you've said all your points today, you're not on the con committee for it.
Thank you. Prepare to vote.
Like to make a motion? You can add me to both, you can add me to both con committees. The idea here isn't obviously to have council members on these committees, right? What you want is you want citizens to do it. I have done them in the past when we haven't been able to find people. But we don't always want, people know what Jonathan Bingle thinks. And if we always want to hear from Jonathan Bingle, I'm happy to do more. But I think that's a pretty rude statement.
Council President.
Councilmember McCattart.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Councilmember Bingle. It is kind of rude and off, out of nowhere. I was on the parks levy, which, again, deferred to god knows when by this council. And so I was on there as a pro. And I felt like it didn't make sense to be a pro and a con at the same time because, again, these were both gonna be on August. And if we were being responsible, parks would still be on August. So I chose not to do that. Councilmember Bingle is also a candidate for another office. If Councilmember Zappone would like him to be on there in this capacity, that's fine, I'm sure by him. So we can make that change if Councilmember Zappone really wants it.
Policy Director Wright, I don't know at this point in time if we have the ability to put our council members on the levy.
You can certainly entertain an oral motion. You can entertain an oral motion to add names to the pro-con committee.
By suspending the rules.
Not really, no, I don't think you do. But if it make you feel better, you can suspend the rules. But I don't think you need to do that, so.
You can add me to the con committee of the public safety if you'd like.
Okay, well, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of adding people to the pro-con levy statements for the ballot.
Can we clarify if this was a rhetorical discussion or if they were serious?
I think Councilmember Bingle would absolutely do it, so.
100%. And I would, I would just request at the same time, Councilmember Zappone put his name on the pro statement, the in favor...
Yeah, there was a vacancy there.
...of both the public safety and the park.
So Councilmember Bingle and Councilmember Cathcart, you are advancing...
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to add myself to the con statement of the public safety levy and add Councilmember Zappone to the pro statement of the public safety levy.
Councilmember Bingle, you can only speak for yourself, sir.
I don't think that's actually accurate. He could make that motion.
No, I can make that motion. Yep.
So did we suspend the rules?
There was no motion to suspend the rules.
I will move to suspend the rules for the purposes of entertaining this amendment.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded.
I will speak against the motion to suspend the rules. This feels more like theater rather than actual policy discussion.
You brought it up!
We have a process to amending things that are by 10:00 a.m. on Friday. If you were interested in doing that, you could have offered your name. This just seems like it's for show.
Oh, my God. All in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
No, 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 I want to speak to that as well.
Go ahead, Councilmember Bingle.
Today, after a motion to adopt, to substitute, something came in today at the request of the administration, something that was after our rules on Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we did it all day long. This is all a response to you saying you could have done this. I'm happy to do it. The only theater here is you, sir.
Thank you. The motion on the floor to suspend the rules, all those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
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 What? We didn't want to do this, really?
Thank you. Moving on. My gosh, did we actually vote on it yet? So all in favor of the names that have been proposed for the pro-con statement? Mr. Wright, do you have a comment?
No, go ahead.
All those in favor, please vote. Thank you. On to Resolution 0043 for the special election of the Parks Board. Ms. Fister?
Resolution 2024-43 of the City of Spokane, modifying a prior request of the city council to hold a special election on Proposition Number One and to request that the Spokane County Auditor instead hold the election for Proposition Number One relating to regular property tax levy to provide funding for park improvements and safety citywide on February 11, 2025.
Any counsel, any public testimony?
Yes. No, not on that one. Let me just double-check here my spreadsheet.
Just confirming, there's no public testimony?
Yeah. Yep, John, first John, and then Jacob, and then Derek for their first three.
I've been a lifelong citizen of Spokane and enjoyed many of the parks. And I include many of the moms with their kids. And of course, so many events like the Royal Refugee Day at Gary Park, the SEYU at Edna Hero Park, and the swimming pools, sports programs, and outdoor concerts at Comstock. Our parks are the envy of Spokane. I can't even count on my fingers and toes the number of people who complement our park system. If a new levy is necessary to maintain this, please put it on the ballot, and I'll tell you, I will vote for it.
Thank you, John.
Next up is Jacob, then Derek, and then Dave M. Jacob, if you're online, could you please hit star three? Not seeing Jacob. Derek Azaro?
Derek Azaro, District 1. I cannot believe you pushed this forward to next year. This has been worked on for a long time. The Parks Department, they all were for this. Everything was all in play. And out of nowhere, you know, this mayor who never comes to these meetings, never shows up to the council, any of the town halls, makes no input except, you know, basically demanding what she wants and orders you to do what she wants. There is no way you should vote this out to the end, next year. This should be in August, left alone, not touched. This was something that was already in play. Our parks are all devastated from all the homeless and all the damage and everything else that's been going on in the city. And now you're gonna push this out even further. This is ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous, that this should be taken off and pushed out like that. I already know you already voted for this during the briefing section. So, you know, basically no point to say anything because, again, 5-2.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Dave online, and then Dennis Flynn, and then Dream. Go ahead, Dave, you're unmuted.
Thank you. I will go ahead, and I had signed up on all of these. I will pass on the other two that I've signed up on. But I do have a question that I would like to know. It looks like there was another Resolution 0047. It looks like that has been either moved or something. But it's on the schedule, and it says... And it says it's for police chief appointment. Is that a typo?
No, Dave, that is, council will consider that resolution appointing the police, or the fire chief later this evening.
Okay, just to let you know, the, I'm looking at it right now online. It says police chief appointment. So that was my confusion on it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was a typo.
Great. Thank you for clarifying that. I'll pass on the other things I signed up for. Thank you.
And then Dennis and then Dream.
Hey, Council President, Dennis Flynn. I live near St. Charles. I remember a long time ago, Parks wanted to cut down a bunch of the trees at Corbin and there was uproar from the public about it, right? About getting rid of the trees, but they were beetle infested. And the one article, the, the letter to the editor that actually got printed that I ever wrote was in support of that, even though I grew up on Cleveland and Wall and had barrel rocket fights and played baseball in that park and swung, swinged until you got 10, 15 feet in the air and jumped off. So I support the Parks Department. I support, I feel like they know what they're doing for the community. I feel like they do a good job at doing what they do for the community. And it seems like they do it within the means that they have available to them to the best of their ability. I'm sure that there's waste that could be cut in there too, though. But, you know, as far as moving this, I just couldn't understand it again. The, the order that we have these tonight made me concerned about why we were having one in August and the other one in November. Now I know it's moved out until February. And, you know, it's like, do we, do we find out which elections are going to have the most turnout and strategically position these so that they meet the majority votes instead of just putting the important things on the elections that have the most people coming to them so that you can get the actual public input? It's the same thing as when I tell you about surveys and opt-in surveys are a terrible way of getting public input when you have very scientific ways of actually getting real public input. So I do agree, the Parks Levy is an important thing. And I, like I said last week, I prefer you have as few elections in my mailbox as possible so as to reduce the money we spend on those. So I would rather have it beyond this November election. But it just seems like there's manipulation of us plebes going on here. And so with that, I will yield back.
Thank you.
And last up is Dream.
Is this for the Parks study?
Yes. All right, any counsel commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah. I'll be very brief. I've already talked about this, but just once again, we have a very well thought out plan that took two years of public engagement to produce, does a ton for Northeast Spokane where we have really, really challenged parks. This does not deserve to be punted.
Councilmember Bingle?
Thank you. Yeah, when you look at developed park acres per district, you're going to see Council District One, far, far and away the lowest. You know, when you're looking at between District One and District Three, District One has about half the amount that District Three has. And when you're looking at District One and District Two, District One has about a quarter of the parkland that the South Hill has. And so, I mean, we have, again, they have four times the amount of developed parkland as the Northeast. And as was presented to us in one of our town halls recently, the neighborhood that I live in has about 10% of the population of the City of Spokane in that one neighborhood, one out of the 30 neighborhoods. We have about 10% of the population. And we realistically have one seven acre neighborhood park for 16,000 residents. You know what I mean? Like, it's a, it's a crazy amount of people who are living in that, in that neighborhood. We deserve, we deserve the, the parks up in the Northeast. I think this plan, outside of just being really well thought out, you know, Council President Wilkerson and I were on the executive committee as we talked about different things. And I think a lot of people recognized that there was, you know, historic underinvestment in the Northeast when it comes to parks. And not just the Northeast, there were certain areas of District Two and certain areas of District Three as well. And this plan really invests in the underinvested areas in the city of Spokane. And you had a lot of really good advocates in that room. Like I said, Councilmember Cathcart did work on it before I was on the park board. Council President Wilkerson and I made sure that those who hadn't received some investment in many, many years or were hurt by, you know, the freeway going through East Central and West Central, there were really good advocates making sure that the historically underinvested areas were going to get a, a slight bump in investment, not so much to throw it really out of, out of proportion, but a slight bump there because it was worth it. And I, I think this is a really well thought out plan. And, and I will be supporting this one. I hope it passes. I hope that it goes to those, to those areas because they desperately need them. And again, just want to thank Council President Wilkerson for, for all of her time and effort on this as well on the executive committee and the park board members and all who've, who've put some time into this.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yeah, I'll be fairly brief and I'm very empathetic to, to Parks. I think we all love our Parks. And, you know, I was, I worked maintenance in our Parks Department almost 20 years ago, which is hard to believe. And it is sad to see that a lot of the challenges that existed then still exist now. You know, our parks are definitely overdue for an investment. And part of the reason for, you know, pushing this back is because this levy that we are talking about for community safety, it is a general fund levy which includes funding for parks. So in order for us to, I think, really come back to voters, we need to make sure that we are making smart investments, looking at what would be the appropriate funding allocation if it passes.
Thank you. Councilmember Klitschke?
Yeah, I agree. This is a really awful situation. It's very frustrating to be here. Nobody wants to be putting off our Parks investments. They're a great asset to our community. And I agree that they've done a great job on the plan. However, just want to echo what Councilmember Dillon said. A percentage of the general fund is allocated to Parks. So when we pass this levy to fix the general fund, a lot of that is going to go to Parks. Which would mean if we're also doing a Parks levy, that we have an inaccurate number to fund the plant, the improvements in the plan, which is frustrating. But if the community safety levy doesn't pass, we also would not be able to implement that plan. This is not where any of us wanted to be. It's not a good situation and it's not because it's a bad plan, but here we are.
Councilmember Bingle?
Hey, and to Mr. Flynn out there, we absolutely know which elections have the lowest or highest turnout or which are the most favorable to levies. So you are not wrong on that. It's one, it's 100% chosen at times for, for those reasons.
No further commentary. Prepare to vote. Ms. Fister, Resolution 0042.
Resolution 2024-42, updating the appointments of for and against committee members relating to Proposition Number One on the August 6, 2024 special election ballot regarding a proposed increase in the regular property tax levy for citywide park improvements and safety for a 20-year period beginning in 2025.
Thank you. Again, this is the names of people who will be voting or writing for and against the levy. We have Derek Azaro. Did you want to speak again, Derek? No other public comment? Councilmembers opposed?
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to defer this indefinitely.
There is a motion on the floor to defer indefinitely. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of-
Councilmember Bingle has his hand.
Councilmember Bingle?
Okay, I thought we were, we were voting on the pro con statement for this right now.
We are voting on that, but since we had just voted to defer the levy till February, we were going to defer the pro con committee members to a later date.
I apologize. On the last one, I thought we were voting to approve the resolution, which put it onto the ballot in February.
That's what we did.
Correct, correct, correct.
Okay, so we didn't defer it. We approved it to go on to the ballot in February.
But now we're talking about the pro con committee members and we're deferring that. Councilmember Kepner?
To be clear, we didn't make a technical deferral, but we deferred it to February, just to be-
Correct, yeah. But, so, we, we approved that to go on to the ballot in February, but we're going to defer the pro con statement indefinitely, the pro con appointment indefinitely?
Well, currently, there are no.
Councilmember Bingle, I, I made the staff request, if you're willing, in order to do some more recruitment for pro and con committee members, we have two on pro, but no con right now. And I, I would go spend that additional time trying to recruit additional members.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Any counsel commentary? So the motion on the floor is defer indefinitely. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you, Mr. Jacob. Ms. Fister, we're back on track. Resolution 0045.
Resolution 2024-45, declaring field instruments and controls incorporated Spokane as sole source provider and authorizing the city to enter into a value blanket order for Endershauser instrumentation, universal controllers, probes, parts, and supplies from January 1, 2024 through May 31, 2029 without public bidding, approximately $400,000.
Any public input? No public commentary? Any commentary from council? Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-46, declaring KGS Northwest LLC Bellevue, Washington as sole source provider and authorizing the city to enter into a value blanket order for Millican valves and valve parts from June 1, 2024 through May 31, 2029 without public bidding, approximately $500,000.
No public comment? Counsel commentary? Prepare to vote.
Resolution 2024-37, establishing the Plan Commission Work Program for 2024, 2025.
Yeah, one public comment. Derek Azaro? Passed. Any counsel commentary?
This is the work program?
Yes. Prepare to vote. Great. Thank you.
Resolution 2024-47, approving the appointment of Julie Oberg as the Fire Chief for the Spokane Fire Department.
Yes, and I had incorrectly on the testimony signups, a police chief. We do have two additional commenters besides Dave. Dave, you can email me if you want to still comment on this, but we have Dennis Flynn and Justice Forall.
And this is clarity for the new fire chief, not the police chief.
I think Council President Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. I wish Julie the best of luck in running this important department. And I hope Julie will go out of her way to make amends in the most humble way possible with those firefighters who were ethically wronged by the vaccine mandate, lost their jobs. That was obviously based on deceptions propagated by the highly paid people in our own SRHD who did absolutely none of their own research to guide the local community that they're charged with providing supportive expertise, parroting the common narrative instead of using their critical thinking skills. I don't know, $100,000 year salaries or whatever. And if any ridiculous repeat comes during her tenure, such as the mystical disease X, I hope she will educate herself and then take a principled stand in support of those to whom she should be a servant leader. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Justice Forall?
Justice, if you're online, can you hit star three? Justice?
Any counsel commentary? Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I, I have an immense amount of respect for Julie and I'm really glad to see her in this role. I know there's been some frustration in the community from some folks. We were supposed to have a big search for both the police chief and the fire chief. And, and I can understand it kind of feels like the rug was pulled out a little bit on this. But ultimately, and I can't say for fact, but ultimately, I, I think, certainly with her interest in the position, I think it would have likely ended up with her as the, the best outcome anyway. And we are able to save quite a bit of money actually in a search and in that effort. So I, I think this is the right decision. I think it's the right appointment. I think it's the right person. And really grateful to have Chief Oberg in this role.
Well, I'm excited to have Chief Oberg in this role as well. I know that a survey had went out to the fire department membership as to her leadership and their support of her in this position. So I think she'll do a fabulous job and just to me, value at it. She's the first female fire chief in the city of Spokane's history and I look forward to her leadership.
Prepare to vote.
Wait, Council President?
Councilmember Bingle, don't vote yet.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I'll, I'll say the same thing, although I would just say whoever's the best person for the job, God bless it, male, female, I don't care, just whoever's going to be the best for the job is great. But I, I also like Julie. I think that for positions like this, I think that they require pretty extensive public outreach. And I wish we would have seen a lot more from this search of meeting with community members and having some options and allowing Julie to rise to the top in that situation. And, I mean, that ship has sailed for this position. But I hope we, I certainly hope we do that for the police chief, for positions as important as this when it comes to, you know, public safety. And when it comes to, again, the size of their budgets, I think those positions demand some pretty extensive public outreach to make sure that we're getting the best. And that's no knock on Julie. Like Councilmember Cathcart said, I think Julie's great. I think she'll do a fantastic job here. I will be voting for her, but, but I hope we, we do more public outreach with, with positions like these.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
Ordinance C 36513, relating to the Fire Code, amending Section 17F.110.010 of the Spokane Municipal Code, adopts the 2021 Wildland Urban Interface Code.
No public comment? Any counsel commentary? Prepare to vote. Right, thank you.
Ordinance C 365413 will be considered under hearings item H2. Ordinance C 36515, relating to residential rental properties and establishing minimum notice period for residential rent increases and terminations, amending sections 10.57.130 and 10.57.140 of the Spokane Municipal Code, creating new sections 10.57.160 and 10.57.170 of the Spokane Municipal Code and establishing an effective date.
Great, we have a number of public comments. Mackenzie Draper, Lisa Gibbs, and Terry Anderson.
Thank you so much. Speaking tonight on the tenants' rights ordinance, my parents rented most of the houses and apartments that we lived in growing up. In fact, only seven years ago, they were able to purchase their own home on Five Mile and they're very happy to have a place of their own, one in which they can make changes to the yard, update the flooring, and personalize other aspects of their house. After moving out of their home after college, I also became a renter in this area. The difficulties of navigating the renting landscape in Spokane are numerous, not the least of which include hikes in rents year after year. From 2017 to 2022, my rent increased by an average of $80 every year. These increases quickly became a burden because my wages did not increase by the same amount and I began to need to visit a local church's food pantry. By the grace of God, my fiancee and I were able to purchase an apartment with the help of her parents. We were able to breathe a sigh of relief that we wouldn't have to worry about price increases on our housing year after year. This is my experience as a renter in Spokane and my experience has been extremely privileged. This, we escaped the worst of what landlords often throw at their tenants and yet it was also a burden. The spokesman review said that rents have increased in Spokane County faster than in the state as a whole over the last decade, jumping 74% from 2013 to 2014. the state as a whole over the last decade, jumping 74% from 2013 to 2023. In Washington State, minimum wage has increased 71% from the same time period. That doesn't sound so bad, right? It's at least relatively equal. But renters can't only give their paychecks to their landlords. They have other bills to pay, families to feed, children to raise, life to live. It's not right for landlords to hide behind the mom-and-pop moniker when ringing tenants for all the money they can extract. Tenants in Spokane need to, at the very least, have time to find options to pay the rent increases imposed by landlords. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa?
Councilor Wolkerston? Members, my name is Lisa Gibbs, and I live on the South Hill here in Spokane. I came in today to offer my opinion about the proposed ordinance that I absolutely agree with. It probably won't immediately affect me. On February 28, I received a letter from my landlord telling me my rent was going to go up, and I thought, well, okay, everything's going up. I wasn't shocked. I drove home, opened the official notice, and just sat down on my couch and cried. My rent went up 42%. Can you imagine getting home and opening your mail and having your mortgage payment go up 42%? And you've got 60 days to deal with that? Or 20 days to give a notice to vacate the premises? So let's talk about me vacating the premises. I don't need to tell you all about the vacancy rates here in Spokane. They range from 1% to 4.7%. I used 4.7% and tried to look at the number of units that were available in Spokane, and we're about 4,600 units short. And I guarantee you, when I go out and look for a place to rent, there aren't going to be very many in my price range. So I've got 60 days to search for an apartment, fill out the paperwork, get accepted by whoever. I've got to pack, physically pack my place. I've got to rent a truck and movers because I cannot move myself. I'm not capable. I could hire a moving company, and the last time I did that, three years ago, it cost about $3,000 for some last month's rent, security deposit. And God forbid I have the pet, because if I do, my costs is going to go up and it's going to limit my availability. I'm 65 years old. I'm single. I live alone on Social Security. Now I can add rent burden as a descriptor. I have some very serious medical conditions, and my medical care costs are much higher than most people. My car insurance doubled in December. I don't get to cut down on my expenses when I try to deal with this. I get to cut stuff out. And I'm not talking about cutting things out like trips to the Oregon coast or going to Hawaii with my family. I have to look at other ways to do that, such as reduce my blood pressure medications, maybe, and take them every other day, cut back on my insulin, go off my insulin pump, buy less food, certainly buy less gas. I guess I won't be visiting my family, or maybe I won't be buying my grandkids' birthday presents anymore. Now, listen, it's a sad story, and I know you can't do anything to help me to increase my...
Time is up, Lisa. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Terry? And then John Alder.
Oops. Hi, thank you. My name is Terry Anderson, and I am the Director of the Spokane Office of the Tenants Union of Washington State, and I currently am serving as the interim executive director. I'm here to speak in favor, in support of this ordinance. Tenants need more time than 60 days to prepare for rent increases. You just heard a tenant speak who's receiving a huge rent increase, and I have been in her building, and tenants in that building are receiving rent increases anywhere from 40 to 60%. And this is a tax credit building meant to be affordable. I work in a senior tax credit building in North Spokane where all the tenants in that building are senior citizens and many pay more than 70% of their monthly income in rent. They are deathly afraid of that day that comes when that rent increase is going to exceed their monthly rent, and they are living in fear every day that they'll be living on the streets of Spokane. We talked to renters who are in their 70s, 80s, who've retired, living on retirement income, and they're looking for jobs. They're looking to go back to work, whether it's a low-paying job that's physically demanding. They need to pay their rent. These are the people we talk to every day. We have a statewide tenant hotline. We do workshops and clinics in Spokane. We table at events, and we oftentimes have lines in front of our table, tenants telling us about these rent increases that they do not have enough time to address. This is really a really... Thank you, Councilmember Paul Dillon, for proposing this amendment. We will not be the first city in the state to increase our rent increase notices. There are at least 10 other cities that I could probably name just off the top of my head that have done so. We will be the first one in eastern Washington, and I hope that sets a trend. This ordinance will not charge landlords fees. It will not prohibit them from charging fees. It does not cap the amount of rent that they charge. It does not do anything that would harm landlords. But what we have right now is harming tenants. Tenants do not, I mean landlords, do not pay a BNO tax. They're exempt from the BNO tax. And it's amazing how many landlords tell their tenants that the reason they're increasing the rent is because their taxes are going up. Their taxes don't go up because they don't pay BNO taxes in Washington. It's time that we do something to help relieve renters from this housing crisis we're experiencing, and this is a good first step. Thank you, and I urge you to vote yes.
Thank you, Terry. Next is John Alder, and then Julia Sparkman after that.
John Alder, I live in Spokane. Before buying a home, I was a renter for 43 years, so I have a lot of history here. I can bring back up what I'm saying. Times have changed a lot from 1980s, when you're only paying 25%, 30% of your wages for rent, and the top deposit might be $50. You weren't paying for an old vacuum cleaning deposit that very seldom gets used, and there's very little of any pet deposit being done. So it may have been still a little difficult to save up for moving, but it could be done in a reasonable time period. Here we are in 2020s, paying 40% to 50% of our income, deposits that come close to what our rent is, carpet cleaning deposits, application fees of $50 to $75, ridiculous pet deposits of $200, $500 a piece, on top of the paying the rent that, again, is 40% to 50% of your wages versus 25% to 30% of wages in 1980. I'd also like to mention a special group that doesn't get mentioned very often. It's the 65-plus, who very seldom has a paycheck that can cover the average rent that we have now in Spokane. They need a lot of help getting special apartments where they can pay only a percentage of their... So you can see that this 180-day notice, yeah, still might be enough to help people move into new homes, but no question about it, it is necessary today. So please, all seven of you, think, consider the cost of moving yourself if you have to all of a sudden, and think whether you can do it. Then after all that thinking, there should be only one vote to make, and that's yes for ordinance 36515. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Julie? And after Julie, we'll have Brian Gwynn.
Hi, my name is Julie Sparkman. I live on the north side of town. In the last 12 months, I have been denied the protection of a lease, and I have had rapid-fire rent increases to a total of 57%. I would like to come in here and say that supporting this measure will solve this crisis. However, during the state legislative session, I advocated for rent stability, and the reaction was pretty immediate. I have been called by prospective landlords after putting in applications to be told that they have a house, but not for me. And I have been told that I will never get rented too. And so I would just urge you, if you're going to vote yes on this, to think about that because there is a room full of very frightened people, and there are 300 people in the building that I live in who are too afraid to come and speak for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. After Brian, Terry Hill.
Thank you, Council President and Council members. My name's Brian Gwynn. I'm with Rapt. We're a real estate, excuse me, residential real estate asset company, and our goal is to monetize rent in the future, so when you pay rent, you earn an asset or grow wealth. And the reason I'm here, I'm against this ordinance because I just feel that it's going to increase the rent that the tenants will pay. I feel the more regulations in any industry causes the cost to go up, and we currently are regulating the rental market to death, and over time, it's going to alleviate innovation, and it's just going to increase the cost. So I urge you to maybe step back, think about our kids, your kids, my kids, your grandkids, your grandkids' kids, and how are they going to have a place to rent in the future when we continue to regulate the housing? I think housing's super important, and that's why we're trying to develop an asset for tenants. So the last thing I would say is, there's two other things. I'm a little nervous, I apologize, but thanks for the smile. There's two other things that bother me about the ordinance is the safety of the humans, not only the tenants, but the property managers or landlords, when they have to physically process, serve the rent increase notice. I think that's an unnecessary step. I think most residents would not, would rather not have a piece of paper taped to their door with blue tape on it. When they get home, all of a sudden, there's this blue tape. It looks like eviction notice, but it's a rent increase notice. I think we should continue with being able to mail that. And then there's some language that doesn't match the state law, and I would employ you to look at the state law versus what the current language is and use the same language that's in the state law for the tenant's protection against retaliation. I think that's just going to cause less confusion because I really think the winners in this whole game are attorneys, landlords, and property management companies. The losers, sorry, not landlords, attorneys, property management companies, and the losers are tenants and landlords. So keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Terry? And after that, Corey Childs.
Terry, a long-time Spokane resident. Last week, a well-organized, well-rehearsed group of landlords spoke to this council, telling them how overburdened this ordinance is for them. Tonight, I offer some truth bombs from the other side of the tracks. Tenants. Tenants who make it possible for landlords to make their monthly mortgage payment that increases their equity in their property and ultimately increases their wealth. Tenants who have seen their rents increase in Spokane County 74% in the last 10 years. Tenants who currently have the option, tenants facing a rent increase that currently have the option of, A, finding another place in 60 days. Good luck with that one in a market with a 1.5% vacancy rate. Or B, sucking it up and meeting that rent increase. Maybe they take on a second job, robbing them from, robbing them from, robbing them time from their families. Maybe they fail, maybe they don't fix the brakes on their car. Not a good idea. Maybe they tell their kids, no vacation this summer, sorry. Getting through my list a little faster. Younger renters, maybe they're forced to move back with their parents. Yeah, that's wonderful. Older renters, enjoying their golden years, thinking about returning to the workplace. This ordinance doesn't fix all those problems, but it gives a little breathing room. Higher yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Corey Childs, and then Will Hewlings.
Hello, I'm Corey Childs from District 1. I'm in support of this ordinance. We all know we have a housing crisis. This is just one of the many steps we need to take to keep people housing from living on the street. Most people I know are living paycheck to paycheck, and many are on disability income. We can't come up with more money out of the blue. If rent is going up, we need enough time to find another job to work or another place to live because the rent we're paying is already just outside our budgets. This is the most logical and beneficial ordinance I've seen come out of this council in the past six months, and it needs to be passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Will Hewlings, and I live downtown. I am a renter myself. I really want to express my strong disapproval of ordinance C36515, an ordinance relating to residential rental properties and establishing a minimum notice period, which is 180 days. I'm not for that. I think 60 days is, two months is perfectly fine. I'll give you a little story. I don't see nothing being mentioned, but I lived in the Valley, and when I moved downtown to Spokane, before I moved here, I was served with a 20-day notice on my apartment. Now, being a tenant that paid his rent on time, lived there for over five years, well, the landlord wanted to do repairs on this, my apartment complex, so he gave me 20 days. And that's state law, they were allowed to do that. So I had to move out. Now, being a veteran, I'm kind of fortunate that there's help for veterans, and, you know, I feel for people, you know, having to struggle with housing. That's why I speak so passionately about homeless, the homeless here in Spokane, because a lot of the people that I see on the sidewalk by where I live at, they're homeless because they have nowhere to go. So, I mean, obviously, we got to fix things, but because people take advantage, you know, of the landlords don't pay their rent. Where I lived at, it was astonishing how many people didn't pay the rent because of COVID. Well, because of that, now landlords are being more strict when they're doing background, like background checks and everything. So, like I said, I'm against this. I mean, maybe do something, 180 days, I think that's a little bit too long, but thank you.
Thank you, Will. Victoria Tasler, and then Lucas Yanni.
Victoria, if you're online, can you hit star three?
Hello, my name is Victoria Tasler, and I am speaking in support of this ordinance. As a child, I was homeless due to eviction because my mom, a disabled veteran, got severely hospitalized three times and racked up about $1,000 in medical bills, and her working full-time to supplement, waiting for her VA disability rating, which she's still waiting for after eight years, was served an eviction notice, and I had to couch hop and was put in very unsafe situations as a child because of the eviction. So passing this ordinance is a step towards renters' rights, a step towards mitigating our housing crisis, the homelessness crisis, and it steps toward keeping families together and a step towards keeping our community together. Two months is not enough to move out if the rent is increased outside of budgets. There's costs related to canceling leases. Mine personally, $2,000 to cancel. There's application fees that you have to go to. There's the acceptance process of even getting an apartment. There's the down payments. There's the pet deposits. There's moving costs and everything, and some people don't even have a place to fall back to if they can't do this in two months. This leads to more homelessness and more people just not having a place to go. This is people's livelihoods in your hands, and it's necessary, especially with our current housing market. housing market. What says that a notice will force landlords to sell their homes? What says a notice will bankrupt landlords? What does a notice warrant retaliation against renters? This is a relationship, and these are, again, people's lives you are managing. If you can't understand the rules and you can't accept more regulations being put on this, when people's livelihoods are at stake, maybe you shouldn't be in the market. And this is going to lead to prevention of eviction. And eviction is a life-changing event, and people can better prepare and can even prevent it with 120-day and 80-day notice. Eviction doesn't just affect your stereotype of a bad tenant either. It affects families. It affects veterans. It affects the disabled. It affects minorities. It affects these, and it affects those in medical recovery. It affects people, and it affected me as a child. These mom-and-pop landlords cannot get my sympathy until they stop pushing out the mom-and-pops of their homes with these rent increases. When you give 120 days, that is plenty of time to prepare. And I don't see why this is an issue for anybody. You're going to allow rent, these landlords, to continue to price gouge and bully us out of our apartments and out of our homes unless you pass this ordinance. And I don't care if I get retaliation in the future for this. I feel passionately about issues like this, and I think it needs to be passed. Thank you.
Lucas?
I would like to voice my support for this ordinance. I am of the opinion that a minimum 180 days notice when raising rents is more than reasonable to ask of landlords. And in response to those who claim this will ruin them as a rentier, if being a landlord is too hard, might I suggest you stop being one. Sell your property and put it back on the market so a family can buy it. Nobody is forcing you to buy extra housing. You made the choice to stretch yourself too thin. When you make an investment, you are not guaranteed a return. An investment is inherently speculative and can either yield a profit or end up being a loss. This is how the market functions, and just because you own property does not mean you are immune to or above market forces. Cash out your chips if it's not paying off. For this, I'll quote Adam Smith, an 18th-century economist, often referred to as the father of capitalism. In what many consider his crowning achievement, Wealth of Nations, he wrote, "As soon as the land of any country has all become private property, the landlords, like all other men, love to reap where they never sowed and demand a rent even for its natural produce." He then goes on to say, "The landlord acts always as a monopolist and exacts the greatest rent which can be got for the use of his ground." I'd like to point out that rent increases are directly linked to increased homelessness. According to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, their analysis found, quote, "median rent increases of $100 a month were associated with 9% increase in homelessness in the areas we examined." Washington State is included in that analysis. At the very least, this ordinance will give renters much-needed heads-up when such increases are announced. Thank you.
Thank you. Silas Eroldi? Thank you. And after that, KJ January. And please correct me on your enunciation of your last name.
That was good. Thank you. So, my name is Silas. I'm an advocacy and policy organizer with Spectrum Center. We're a 2S LGBTQI-plus nonprofit in Spokane. There's a few things I wanted to say. I guess I want to acknowledge that in moving forward with this, you will be advancing, you will take, you'll be taking a step forward towards equity when it comes to racial discrimination, sex and gender discrimination, in the sense that most queer and trans people in Spokane and Washington, statistically across the country, I guess, are renters. And thus, by making a move towards tenant protections, you are protecting us. And likewise, we have statistics from Terry at the Tenants Union. 80% of black households are renting in Spokane, and I can't remember the other number. But what I'm saying is, thank you for proposing this. It's a move towards solidarity. I think the rent stabilization bill was another move entirely, but I know this language came from that, so. And I also wanted to say that I do know a number of landlords who are intentionally renting out space in their homes so that people have the opportunity to build rental history. And, like, I think there can be a reciprocal relationship between landlords and tenants. I believe that this sort of measure, myself, I have a landlord who has not, like, unjustly raised rent whatsoever in the past five years. And I just think that it's feasible for people to understand that this buffer, because it is a buffer, is going to go towards, it's like a giant Band-Aid, I guess, because what you're doing is giving people on limited income the opportunity to basically find roommates in that six months. I'm thinking mostly of senior citizens and then younger people who are both ends of the spectrum of not being able to make more money but needing a place to live. So, in a way, you're addressing the rising rates of houselessness. But I do think that buffer is much needed, and I'm really excited to see it. Thank you.
Thank you. KJ, and then Michelle Thomas next. Welcome.
Hi. Okay. My name is KJ. I live on the east side, and I work for Spectrum Center Spokane. And I'm here today to support the ordinance that extends the notice period for rent increase in our city. Currently, under state law, tenants are only given 60-day notice before their rent is raised. However, this short notice period is simply inadequate and fails to address the needs of our community. When considering the landlord-tenant relationship, fairness and mutual benefit should be at the forefront. Tenants deserve the same timeframe as landlords to adjust to impending changes. While 20 may not seem significant annually, it translates, or significant annually, it translates to $240, a substantial sum for many. For landlords, maintaining long-term tenants is economically advantageous, as the costs associated with evictions and turnover exceed the potential gains for increased rent. Extending the notice period for rent increase is truly a Band-Aid measure, but it's a critical step that will provide much-needed relief for our clients. At Spectrum, our community health workers work to offer rental assistance for those in need. Most clients are rent burdened, with more than 30% of their income going to rent. With the addition of moving fees, first and last deposits, this creates an unattainable income level expected. Additionally, there is so little housing in the Spokane area that without this extension, there isn't really available units for clients to go. When our CHWs work with landlords, some refuse to take any assistance that we offer, in part because they are worried about their taxes. Other landlords will charge for each day that the rent is late. One of our CHWs has had at least three clients that were evicted, and landlords never even responded to their request for rental assistance. If this is actually a business, then a landlord must run things like a business, which means they should engage with, engage in some communication with community. They should have some business savvy and foresight for one shifts, for shifts that may be coming down the pipeline legislatively and through the housing market. And they should have some money set aside to cover a few months for incidentals. Incidentals happen throughout the year that landlords and homeowners have to deal with, like plumbing and eventual roofing issues or paint jobs, et cetera. Considering the known housing crisis, tenants being late and/or short on rent should already be factored in as a routine aspect of property management. And they should be ready to remedy it as though it is a planned and scheduled service, similar to the one that does, that one does with a car, an oil change, new seasonal tires. If this is a, if this is a business, then missing a month of rent shouldn't have the landlord desperate for funds. Landlords need to remember that they aren't performing a public service. They are running a business. In conclusion, I urge City Council to prioritize this, and thank you for proposing this.
Thank you. Michelle Thomas?
Michelle's online. Go ahead, Michelle. You're unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Oh, great. Okay. I'm Michelle Thomas with the Washington Low Income Housing Alliance here in support of this ordinance. The Housing Alliance is a statewide organization with members and advocates in Spokane, and we've heard from many renters in Spokane who are struggling with excessive rent increases. The proposed law to provide more notice of rent increases is common sense and much needed. Thank you, Councilmember Dylan, for introducing it. Rent increases are destabilizing and are directly linked to homelessness. Many studies have cited the connection, including one by the United States Government Accountability Office in 2020, which found that an average $100 rent increase is associated with a 9% increase in homelessness. This ordinance will give renters more time to figure out their next steps. Providing more time is something that many states, cities in the state have already done, including Bellingham, Tacoma, Issaquah, Shoreline, Aberdeen, Olympia, Kirkland, and more. Landlords may say that providing this basic protection, such as increased notice and other protections, will result in them selling their properties. And they often intentionally miscite a City of Seattle report that tracks only the number of registrations for the Seattle's rental inspection program, not the sales. The University of Washington conducted a study released late last year that found no correlation between the City of Seattle passing renter protections with landlords selling their properties. Absolutely no correlation. And a City of Seattle audit released in December examining changes in housing supply found that shifts between small rentals to larger ones are part of a nationwide trend, which has to do with upzoning, and not related to tenant protections that the city has in place. And in the City of Seattle, despite the fact that they have passed many renter protections, a number of rental units has actually increased in the city. Please keep all of this in mind as you move forward with this legislation. Although renters need rent stabilization in addition to increased notice, the Housing Alliance commends the City of Spokane for exploring this ordinance and for doing what is within your power to protect the many renters in Spokane. Please pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Union Carter, and then Andrew Rolls.
Union, if you're online, can you hit star three? Yep. Go ahead when you're ready. You're unmuted.
Okay, thank you so much. Hi, my name is Union Carter. I'm the community organizer for the Peace and Justice League, Peace and Justice Action League, excuse me. But more importantly, I'm a renter, and I live in District One. Rent prices are at historic highs, and this ordinance is one way that we can support renters and ever-growing rent prices. Like many have said tonight, this isn't a fix-all. Rarely anything is. But choosing not to protect renters amidst huge rent increases and limited housing in Spokane will only contribute to the rising rates of houselessness that we're seeing already rise extremely high in Spokane. And while living in the Logan neighborhood the last couple of years, and now I live in Hilliard, I saw many of my friends who were college students experience extreme rent increases from their small-scale landlords in the Logan neighborhood that prey on college students and their lack of knowledge about their tenant's rights in order to increase their rent. And I'm not going to say everybody is preying on college students, but there's plenty of them that experienced what I would say, extreme rent increases. And this has caused them to take out more loan money or having to pick up a second job while also being a full-time student. I hope that this is the first of many steps to creating stability for your renting constituents. There's a lot of renters in Spokane. Myself and a lot of the people who have testified before me also claim to be renters. And it also, I would like to point out that one of my district representatives, member Cascart, said that you were worried about rent increasing because of the levy. And it really made me happy to hear you say that, and I hope that you vote in favor of this ordinance tonight, considering your concern about rent increasing. I urge you all to pass this and properly enforce this ordinance. And I hope this isn't the last time we talk about tenants' rights in City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Rolls, and then Sarah Dix.
Council President Wilkerson, members of council, good evening. I'm Andrew Rolls with the Downtown Spokane Partnership. As stated last week, the DSP is opposed to passage of this policy, as well as any policy that would delay or harm the ability to create new housing at all levels of affordability in downtown. Moreover, we support your work to focus on expanding supply. To that end, I offered five alternatives to further regulating one of the most heavily regulated industries in Spokane and the state. I'll elaborate on those a bit with the hope that at least some of them will continue pass tonight for further consideration. The first concept was to enact Senate Bill 6175, the state's Office to Residential Conversion incentive. The second was to reduce or eliminate height restrictions on Spokane Falls Boulevard across from Riverfront Park. The third was to provide policy and/or fiscal support to Mayor Brown's initiative to reform the city's permitting process. And the fourth was to support a federal tax credit for conversion of commercial to residential property. I'll add one more item to that list of alternative policies you could pursue that would make a more effective contribution than additional regulations, which is the downtown housing study. Should you opt to fund a study using ARPA dollars, you would have a document that would be updated for the first time in nearly 10 years. You would have a study that would tell us, on the basis of third-party expertise, exactly what kinds of housing we have and in what quantities. It would tell us what kind of housing mix we need to be considered healthy. It would tell us, based on best practices from similar communities across the nation, what policies need to be passed locally to propel the growth of downtown housing. And more importantly, you would have a document that would help get projects financed. Your time is limited, and we believe the most effective thing that can be done in the current circumstances is to focus on the housing supply problem. The only kind of market where tenants see a 15% or more rates of rent increase is one where supply is extremely constrained. The downtown housing study and the four other concepts are submitted for your consideration. We appreciate your partnership with us in support of building a more vital city center and hope that at least some of these concepts make it onto your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Sarah Dix, and then Dennis Flynn.
Good evening, Council President Wilkerson and council members. My name is Sarah Dixitt. I am a resident of District One. I'm the board president of Asians for Collective Liberation and the chair for the city's Equity Subcommittee, amongst many other things. Tonight, I'm speaking in support of the increased notice given to renters. There has been a lot of misinformation and fear-mongering around what this ordinance does or doesn't do, and it's important to be super clear of why this is. We know that landlords, developers, and the like are predominantly focused on their bottom line, since this is a business to them. But to their tenants, this is a necessity and about their basic right to have a safe place to call home. This ordinance is simply increasing the notice that tenants get when that safe place they call home is pulled out of their budget due to a rent increase. It does not prevent landlords from raising rent, does not create a cap on rent price, does not limit the amount landlords charge for security or deposits, and many other things which, for the record, many of us would be in favor of. I've lived in Spokane for 10 years and have been a tenant eight of those years. Thankfully, the landlords I had did not engage in unfair or predatory practices, but that was simply because I was lucky. People's ability to stay in their home should not be based on the luck of the draw or the kindness of their landlord. With the housing crisis we've been witnessing in our community for years become worse and worse, we have to do something to help keep people housed. I believe this ordinance will be a step in the right direction, and I urge you to vote yes. Thanks.
Thank you. Dennis Flynn, and then Dua Rahima.
Thank you, council. Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. I want to thank you for considering Councilmember Mingle's amendment, which I support. And even though I'm not so dumb as to think that you can get something where nothing is to be got, at the end of the day, I support the concept of fairness, which other people talked about here tonight. And this amendment puts that fairness into work. So I have no doubt the concept considered by those who will vote against this amendment is hubris instead of firmness, but that's where we're at. When you talk about your expenses increasing, do you think you're unique? Or does it make sense that the owner's expenses increase too? Thinking that you're responsible, that someone else should be responsible to providing for you instead of taking responsibility for yourself is childish. Make more money, find ways to reduce cots, get roommates, move to another area where housing is less, or figure out whatever it is you need to do for yourself. The price-gouging evil landlord, while I'm sure exists, is rare, at least for the person who owns one or two or a few rentals, but is probably more likely at the corporations that all the now-high-priced housing in Spokane for sale is driven to, because the real problem here is that no one wants to for sale is driven to, because the real problem here is that no one wants to talk about it or point it out, is the Growth Management Act and the artificial restriction it has perverted the market with for decades. All because we elect people who tell us we can have what we want without telling us it comes with a price. Time to learn that nothing is free, or as some ideologically warped center said, reap the whirlwind, and there is no money tree. I do find it ridiculous that there's appeals in capitalism and running a business in the same breath as appeal to restricting property rights. And I keep hearing about fairness, so I encourage you to support the amendment in the spirit of fairness.
Thank you. Dua, online?
Go ahead, Dua. You're unmuted.
Wilkerson and city council members, my name is Dua Rahima Hunter, and I live in District One. I am the statewide organizer for Resident Action Project RAP, a program of Washington Low Income Housing Alliance. We organize with people impacted by housing insecurity and their allies to end housing injustice. I'm testifying pro tonight. Thank you, Councilmember Dylan, for introducing this important legislation. I've spoken with many renters in Spokane who have received large and unjustified rent increases. Their rent is already too high, and these rent increases are making housing instability much worse. It is impossible for many renters to make ends meet. They are struggling to keep a roof over their heads, and 60-day notice for any rent increase is not enough. Renters need more time to adjust to an increase. They may need to pick up an extra hours at work, and they may need to make big changes in their expenses. Or they may even need to move. None of these are easy, and more time means more stability. Moving is expensive and hard. It's very difficult to find new housing that is affordable. More time is critical to help people land on their feet. Again, more time increases the chances that a household can prevent the worst outcome of displacement and homelessness from a rent increase. While we need rent stabilization and in addition to more time, more time is welcome, and I urge you to pass this. I urge you to pass this into law, or we will see a new face of unhoused folks, which will also include children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dua. Rahima, next is Justice for All, then Dream, and then Dave Billsland.
Justice, if you're online, can you hit star three? Go ahead, justice. Go ahead, justice. We're not hearing you yet.
Hello, Justice for All, Spokane City resident. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
The rent notice increase we advocate for is not merely a superficial solution, but an imperative for safeguarding our rights to tenants across the city. For too long, renters have faced arbitrary rent hikes, receiving notices with insufficient lead time, limiting avenues for recourse. So this issue...
You're breaking up justice.
Can you hear me? Sorry. Those without power in this dynamic are receiving its step towards equity. We demand nothing less than transparency and respect to those owed who call Spokane home. This is not a matter of pitting landlords against tenants, but rather fostering a rental market that is fair and balanced, one that serves the interests of all stakeholders. Tenants deserve time and information necessary to make informed decisions about their housing, free from the fear of sudden and unjust rent hikes. Furthermore, we must acknowledge a broader discussion of unaffordable housing, including the lack of second spaces. We know that Spokane restaurants are also suffering because people aren't going out because there's no extra money for people to spend money on second spaces. Right now, with the city at the place it's at, with the minimum wage it's at, we also just have culturally things to think about beyond just, you know, are everyone slow drifting to homelessness? Our youth also have a problem with the hopelessness when it comes down to how are they going to achieve something? Like rent, or, you know, more than that, because, you know, people want to live their lives and actually have dreams and hopes for the future. Right? Now, our youth are having a harder time to achieve that stuff because of the way that the cities are currently, you know, and it's not just this city, but it's, you know, all around. So thanks for this city stepping forward and actually doing something that may be a Band-Aid, but it is a necessary step to fixing the huge mess that, you know, we're all in. Thank you.
Thank you, justice. Dream, and then Dave.
This ordinance is absolutely necessary in order to guarantee a humane standard of living for renters. The market is that bad, I feel it myself as a renter. And with so many people living paycheck to paycheck, having ample time to prepare for rent increases or find a new place will make the difference between people becoming unhoused or not. But all the landlords who came down here last week and told us all the things they would be forced to do if this measure passes speaks to the need for broader housing reform. Though the quote-unquote "mom-and-pop" landlords attempt to distance themselves from the corporate behemoths, the fact remains they are aligned in their stance on this bill because it erodes the power landlords have over renters. It's in the monetary interests of landlords, no matter how big or small, to advocate for policies that give them the most power over renters. And we lock housing away from people unless they can pay. This is the same market that leaves people unhoused, and the threat of being unhoused is what gives renters, what leaves renters accepting subpar conditions and unfair treatment. Landlords make their money because they have been granted ownership of land and housing that they don't need. An idea of land, I would add, that has been continually imposed through force by the U.S. government since its founding on people who were here first. We have to work to remedy the inherent exploitation of the landlord-renter relationship through promotion of community land trusts, right-of-first refusal laws, and public housing accessible to everyone. And the land acknowledgement that gets read at the beginning of all the city council meetings doesn't mean anything if there isn't substantive policy aligned with Land Act passed by this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, and then Tricia Goodman.
Good evening, folks. Dave Billsland, Logan, you all know that already. I firmly support this because if you got to move, you got to raise up some money. And if you don't have a bunch of money in the bank, you're going to have to go out and scramble up and find out how much you can get. Two months ain't enough to raise $3,000 for a $1,000 apartment. If you're stuck in a situation like I am where I'm paying 9.50, I can't afford to move. I can't come up with that kind of money. There's no way I could come up with three grand to move. Even in six months, I don't think I could raise it. But six months gives a person a fighting chance to do it. Because let me tell you, there's a lot of us out there that are rent-burdened. We're the ones that are going to get homeless from it. Because if we don't, 60 days, there's no way. Let's also consider that, oh, when I move, I can use my old deposit at the new place. That's never happened. That's why we'd have to raise the whole thing. We can't depend on our landlord to give us back our deposit. It rarely happens. They charge 60 bucks for a refrigerator light. Yeah. So that six months is important. 120 days, that's not even enough time. I mean, my rent got raised 300 bucks on a 60-day notice. I was scrambling with housing to find out if I qualified for that much assistance. It scared the hell out of me. Six months at least to raise three grand, because that's what it costs to move. Thank you, folks.
Thank you, Dave. Tricia, and then Crystal Burgett.
Thank you, Council President and fellow council members. My name is Tisha Goodman, and I'm a rental property owner and represent a management company that manages close to 700 units in the City of Spokane. I oppose this ordinance, and should it pass, here is what I believe will happen. Housing providers will no longer offer short-term leases, and I think this is something that hasn't been considered as you guys have proposed this ordinance. We have approximately 10% of our tenants on short-term leases that range from two months to 11 months. This change would definitely cause us to stop offering short-term leases, which will really impact a large percentage of people living in the City of Spokane. Because housing providers often don't know what their costs will be in six months, they'll be forced to increase rents to mitigate their risk, and tenants will be negatively impacted. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about increases in costs, and I thought it would be important to share just some of the costs that we've seen over the past year in the multifamily, in our projects. So 12% to 20% increases in maintenance costs, 15% to 30% increases in insurance, 16% to 24% increases in salaries, 10% increase in the City of Spokane refuse, and 100% increase in legal costs. And these are just some of the, these are just a few of them. I understand the intent behind the increased notice period, and I just want to state for the record, our company starts this discussion with our tenants 90 days prior to their lease expiring. So 30 days longer than were required. I do think that you believe that giving tenants six months' notice of a rent increase will give tenants more time to find other housing. However, that won't be the case, because tenants today are only required to give housing providers a 20-day notice of intent to move out. So six months in advance, they know their rent is increasing, there are no units available six months out. So again, I don't know how this helps renters. I believe if you want to help renters and you're asking us to give six-month notice, ask the tenants to give six months' notice that they're vacating, and that will open up visibility to tenants to see what's available should they need to move. In the end, housing providers are likely going to implement larger increases, and tenants will still have to wait until closer to the time they're moving out to figure out where they're moving. The only way to help with a housing crisis truly is more housing. So, and the only way to build more housing is to incentivize investors and housing providers to build in your city. We have to reject the misguided notion that government and more regulation will help solve our housing crisis. And I encourage you guys to continue to focus on efforts to support more building in the City of Spokane. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal?
Hello, Crystal Yosko-Som-Burgett. I'm the co-founder at Mac Movement. I am in support of this ordinance for a couple reasons. I am one of the 115,000 tenants that live here. I'm also one of the 40% facing an eviction. And I think that a common struggle amongst people like me and people facing disparities is that we don't have an equal opportunity to catch up. We don't have an equal opportunity to have notice and be able to make the moves we need to make. 60 days isn't reasonable. 30 days isn't reasonable. 15 days isn't reasonable. I think that the six-month notice is fair. It could be more. I feel like it could be this time next year, your rent will increase. And so I think we should consider that a lot of us are already struggling and fighting for our lives, fighting for our children, fighting for our neighbors, and it's never-ending. And at some point, we've got to do something, so please approve this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joseph Peterson, and then Kathleen Nichols.
Go ahead, Joseph. I'm muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Hello, council. My name is Joseph Peterson, and I'm a renter living in District Three, and I support the amendment of ordinance number C-36515. An absolutely massive thank you to Councilmember Dylan, who put forth this amendment, seeking to protect renters in our community and from taking important steps towards equitable housing in our city. As a lifelong renter and someone who has never owned a home in over 15 years of renting, this amendment helps protect community members like me who rely on ample protections, oversight and accountability when navigating rental agreements, notices, rent increases, and landlord accountability. As someone whose household spends over 40% of our income on rent and lives paycheck to paycheck, this ordinance gives us and many like us more stability and security when navigating the instability of housing and renter landlord relationships. Landlords, especially those who own multiple rental properties, make it increasingly impossible for many in our community to enter the home-buying market and secure a stable housing future for their households. Additionally, because renters in Spokane are disproportionately black, brown, and many of whom are in single or low-income households, it is our responsibility as a community to center communities of color, our queer and trans siblings, our disabled community, and many of whom are especially vulnerable to predatory rent increases, housing instability, and limited landlord oversight and accountability. Many who claim this ordinance amendment will threaten mom-and-pop landlords are missing the bigger picture and are centering households who not only own property and are further marginalizing those who own no property at all, but they continue to encounter barriers preventing them from ever owning at all in the future. In a recent Range Media article written by the absolutely incredible Aaron Sellers, there are plenty of clarifications on what this ordinance does and doesn't do, including the clarification that this will not in any way threaten the rights of landlords or put caps or limits on rent increases, even though many in our community would support those limits anyways. Many of the landlords in our community own multiple properties, making housing impossible to find for lots of people, especially those who are already vulnerable and at risk for finding safe and secure housing. So I urge those who are pushing against this amendment to consider centering those who have not been afforded the many privileges that enabled them to be or protect landlords in our community. And any opposition to this amendment, including you, Councilmember Mingle, clearly situates you in direct opposition to an ordinance that would be supporting, protecting, and helping renters in our community. So I urge council to approve this amendment and vote yes on ordinance C-36515. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen, before you start, Ms. Fister has a quick correction.
Yes, I accidentally read Mingle's version of the amendment for the title, and so I'd like to reread the title for this ordinance. Ordinance C-36515, relating to residential rental properties and establishing minimum notice period for residential rent increases, amending sections 10.57.130 and 10.57.140 of the Spokane municipal code, creating a new section 10.57.160 of the Spokane municipal code and establishing an effective date as amended on April 22, 2024.
And for clarity, Ms. Councilmember Mingle did withdraw his amendment earlier today. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Council President. Wilkerson and council members, thank you for listening to all this testimony this evening. My name is Kathleen Nichols, and I'm with River City Management. It is a small property management company, and we manage mostly single-family homes. I want to speak to a couple of things after hearing the testimony this evening. One of them is that River City Management has lost approximately 15 single-family homes in the last nine months to owners selling because they are tired of all the ordinances that are coming down upon them. Those single-family homes were sold to not investors, but to homeowners, which limits the availability of properties for rent. One of the other things that I want to address is that we like our tenants. We don't want our tenants to move, and I have not heard one person, one person against this opposition who said they've gotten a rent increase. Have they talked to their landlord? Have they told them that that rent increase of $50 might be too much for them? Have they asked, could we split that down the middle and maybe have the increase be $25? That tenant moving costs the owner money. They pay property management to place a new tenant. They're paying for that property to be repainted, re-carpeted. We don't want to lose our good tenants. If that increase is going to be too much for that family, let's negotiate that. Not one person tonight has said that they've talked to their property manager or their owner about that increase. I would really ask you to look at this further before you vote on it tonight, and it's going to go 5 to 2 if you do. That's a fact. I didn't want to testify tonight because I felt like it was a waste of my time. Please, consider this, what it will do by all the other testimony given to you by property managers... managers and owners last week and this evening. Think about what that can do, what that ordinance will change. And tenants, I would encourage you, if you have a rent increase from your landlord, talk to them. We're not bad people. Thanks so much for hearing me.
Thank you, Kathleen. Salvador Rosinos. And after Salvador, Emily Fletcher.
Good evening. Thank you for your time. I appreciate everyone who's given testimony on both sides. My name is Salvador Rosinos. I live in Spokane County. I'm a tenant counselor with the Tenant Union of Washington State. I don't think I can add more than what many tenants have shared with their lived experience. All I can say is I urge you to pass this ordinance. I think it increases tenant protections, and yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Emily Fletcher, and then Amber Abrahamson.
My name is Emily Fletcher. I live in Colbert, Washington, and I work full-time in District 1. And I would like to speak in favor of ordinance C-36515. I'm going to run through my first story real quickly. There has been many stories about folks who have had large rent increases, and they have struggled to make ends meet. Two of my closest friends share an apartment together when their rent raised by $300. They worked hard, and while they were fortunate enough to make ends meet, they had to do so by skipping meals, donating plasma, and taking very sketchy late-night DoorDash assignments. Increasing the time in order for them to make such money would have greatly reduced their stress because in addition of making all this money, they were completing their bachelor's degrees. I would also like to speak in regards to Section 10.57.130, the anti-retaliation protections, and 10.57.140, the private right to action. Another friend that I know, his apartment's plumbing broke down, and in order to be able to use the restroom, he had to walk up and down two flights of stairs in order to use a public access restroom. This friend has already experienced homelessness and was afraid to speak to his landlord on this matter that has been dragged on throughout months because he was afraid of being back on the streets. These two sections would help tenants get the support that they need in order to maintain law. I also like the idea of being able to have dialogue between tenants and landlords, though I do not personally believe we are there yet. So the anti-retaliation protections would give tenants the security they need in order to open the dialogue with their landlords. I'm not saying that all tenants are perfect little angels, and I'm not saying that all landlords are the villain of the story, but the fact of the matter is that landlords have more power and protections compared to tenants, and these ordinances could help level the playing field. I am in favor of this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Amber Abrahamson, and then Rue Ramos. Amber? Okay. All right. Rue? You're welcome.
Ana Colotoc, Uvanga Kalak, Katia Kmeagorunga, Spokane Mi Angngal Rurak. So I've been born and raised here in Spokane, but my people are from Alaska, Kyanah, the village of Kyanah. Iluku Kaktunga Malugunik. I'm two-spirited, and I'm here to say that as a, I'm not either male or female because there are more than two genders in the binary, and I'm here as representing Spectrum Center of Spokane, 2S LBTQQIA organization, but I'm also coming to represent my family, an indigenous family who have lived here since time immemorial. And the whole idea of capitalizing on the existence of people's ability to have a home is a colonial construct that is violent and inappropriate in this space, and I actually completely disagree with the whole, is it, you know, the renters who need to be protected or the landlords? I'm telling you right now, the, that every human being deserves a right to have a home, and that it should never have been colonial and capitalistic because that is inherently the problem. And I encourage you all to continue to support this. Very grateful to you all for even considering this, and obviously Councilman, Councilman Dylan, and I know his community have really helped to make this happen, but y'all, this is, this is a place in which, this is where land back, I'm very appreciative, dream, dream, I'm here for you, homie, because this, this is true, that, that land back means that we give the land back. None, none of the landlords own that property. You can say it's owned, you could say in the United States it's owned, but it's not actually owned. It belongs to indigenous people, and nobody should be houseless in this whole entire, all of America, but particularly in the United States, and particularly in Spokane, where you have strong indigenous leaders who can continue to help guide you on how to do that properly, and I'm grateful to people who are actually considered of that. And as a queer human being and as somebody who has a last name that was not liked when I was looking for a home, it took me a year and a half to find a home, not that long ago. We're talking 2021. And I have money, I have a job, and it took us a year and a half to find a place, and we're in an 800-square-foot home, and we paid almost $2,000 in rent. And the only reason why my family can afford it is because we got people who are multiple earners. Think about it if you have a disability. Think about if you have a mental disability. Think about if you have thousands or hundreds of, hundreds of years of you having to take care of your family. I carry the, 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 the burden of what this colonial violent project has done to my family, and I am just now able to pay my bills in a good way, not because I haven't been working hard and pulling myself up my bootstraps, because you know damn good and well I have, and people who know my history know what I've done for this community. And it, it still isn't enough, and we're still not safe. My family could be houseless again, and we're ready for it because you know what? We don't trust the system, and the trystum, the system ain't looking out for nobody but the capitalistic project that it is now. So I'm thankful for the protections. I hope you absolutely support this and vote yes for this because that's what we need. Thank you so much. Koyanukpok.
Sam Lee and Daniel Clemmie.
I do support this ordinance, but I also want to echo Rue in saying that these are the conditions of white settler colonialism and capitalism. Housing is a human right. I don't think that this is even a very radical ordinance, honestly, to come up here and listen to landowners that just simply want to keep exploiting people. And the fact that there's so much pushback because they want, they wanted, they want to exploit in less time, and, and Paul Dylan is saying they can exploit, but they need six months to do it. This, this is not radical at all, and to come up here and see that mom-and-pop landowners deserve sympathy because they're different from corporations, they're really not, they're still a product of white settler colonialism, white supremacy, and capitalism. And these conditions also, as many others have pointed out, homelessness, which is the apparatus of our colonial police state. So then we, the $96 million that you all give to police is meant to protect property and enforce order, and we have this cycle here, and we see these same conditions where police are then trained by IDF soldiers, and Gazans are also being expelled from their homes. There are also indigenous people that deserve their land back. And Council President Wilkerson talked about redlining last week and how that's affected black people here in the US. We see these parallels happening. We, we can draw these parallels, and this ordinance is, is not enough, and it's still a start. Abolish the police, free Palestine.
Thank you. Daniel, and then Sheri Barnett.
Good evening, Council President. My name is Daniel Clemmie, and I am speaking on behalf of the Rental Housing Association of Washington in opposition to this ordinance. So I'll quote from the ordinance here. Whereas displacement from a rental unit can increase the potential for an individual or family to experience homelessness, and whereas this policy will increase housing stability for low-income renters in the city of Spokane by alleviating displacement pressures from rent increases. Well, let's look at the data from Seattle for if those two things were accomplished. So the Seattle, City of Seattle released an audit report in December of 2023, which showed that 7,000 rental units had been sold between 2016 and 2022. Of those, 87.5% were small mom-and-pops, the ones that don't exist. They did exist, but they sold their properties. 21% of rental property sellers indicated that they converted their rentals to owner-occupied, meaning that they moved into their own unit. They consolidated. 70% of rental housing providers managed between one and five units. 41% of rental housing providers had taken at least one unit off the market between 2016 and 2023. 67% of rental housing property owners indicated that the primary reason that they stopped renting their unit out to the public was due to the difficulties complying with regulations. 45% of those cited the rent increase notice requirements as among the most difficult to follow. I know I sent this email, many of you read it. I, I thought the one that spoke to me the most out of all the statistics from this audit report was that only 1% of the people that sold those homes between 2016 and 2022 said that that sale made financial sense for their business. They, they were just exiting the industry due to regulation. I want to go to another study. It's actually a market report from Harvard University's Joint Center for Housing Studies. It was released in 2024. I'll just quote it here. Increased operating and insurance costs will also continue to challenge housing providers, especially those that are small-scale or operate subsidized apartments and smaller rental properties. In the face of falling returns, housing providers may be less able to afford urgently-needed repairs to the aging stock and preserve low-rent or assisted units. From the same report, the cost of new construction has risen 35% since 2020. Multifamily mortgage originations are down 48%. The cost of new housing is incredibly high. The market shift that Seattle saw was to new Class A properties for the highest income brackets so that they could afford the loans to make those properties. This ordinance will hurt renters. This ordinance will hurt landlords, rental housing providers, property managers. The only thing that this ordinance guarantees is rent increases every six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Barnett, and then Steve Warham. Wareham.
I'm Sheri Barnett. In the city of Spokane, President Wilkerson and all members of the city council, I have been a tenant for quite a long time, and I know I was a good tenant. I took good care of the place, and I've been a homeowner and I've been a landlord. And I think I was very happy to hear this person speak of how we need to talk to one another. We are not enemies. Tenants and landlords are not enemies, but there are injustices, and the more regulations that get piled on smaller people, the less they can afford to take care of the legal business, the tax problems. So I think the thing is two-pronged. People need to have more honor, both tenants and landlords. There are greedy landlords, and there are tenants that don't take care of property and that don't pay their bills. So, you know, we have to regulate if people are immoral, and so we need more morality. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Stephen? And after Stephen, we have Steve Corker.
My name is Steve Wareham. I'm the accountant for the Landlord Association. I need to, somebody brought up to my attention when I got here the day that there was a newspaper article earlier this week that had some misinformation from Dylan. Dylan was saying that the small, the Landlord Association totes its horn and says that, oh, these, we have all these small landlords. Well, the majority of our members are small landlords, so you had your facts wrong. Terry Anderson, Terry Anderson said, we say that our taxes go up every year. Well, our taxes do go up. As home values go up, the property taxes go up, and then you guys vote on legislation to increase the taxes, so all that has to get passed on to the tenants. So, let's see. I wanted to show I got some information that I pull up on the HUD user government portal website, and this information kind of tells us what Section 8 will pay for housing. So the house, the duplexes that I rent out just from 2023 to 2024, Section 8 increased the amount they'd pay by three, or $132 a month. Then there was a gentleman here that was talking about, hey, what about first right of refusal? Okay, first right of refusal. The average low-income house costs $350,000. As a first-time homebuyer, you can put 3% down or 5% down, so that's $10,500, or $17,500 to put down. Well, if they're complaining, hey, we need more time because we can't come up with the money, how are they going to have the money for the first right of refusal? So when those homes go for sale, even if I give them first right of refusal, they're not going to be able to buy it anyway. So it's going to go to a first-time homebuyer. That's one more property that leaves the rental market. So me personally, when I look at the HUD user data website, I have half of my inventory that is rented out for less than what Section 8 will pay. So half of my inventory. So there are small, I'm a small mom-and-pop landlord, I only have six units. So a couple of years ago, like before you guys passed your, your ordinances last year, I realized what was coming down the pike, and I liquidated my inventory in the city of Spokane, and I reinvested it out into the valley where it's more landlord-friendly. So what you need is you need more supply because supply and demand is what's factoring this. If you can get more houses built and there's more supply...
Thank you.
The housing crisis began in 2017, and I was a part of three committees, a committee of the community assembly and then of the mayor's task force to try to deal with these And I'd just like to remind the council that in the last eight years under the leadership of Ben Stuckard and Brian Biggs, you had super majorities. And I think to sit there and say that the responsibility for the crisis rests with two conservative mayors ignores the reality of the power that you have had. Now, I realize only three of you have been on those previous councils, but we are continuing a crisis that I feel is just going to drive the private sector out of low-income housing. I said this before. It's, it's discouraging the investment in property, and it's loss of property, which I think is just absolutely critical. Now, what am I going to do about it? What am I going to do about the housing crisis? Well, the first thing I'm going to do is try to keep as many people in their homes because I'll tell you, it costs three to four times more to support people in homelessness than it does to keep them in the home. The second thing I want to do is make sure the legislature starts dealing with rental assistance for the very same purpose. And why they've ignored that in the last two sessions, I just don't understand. Oh, they want to deal with homelessness, but they're not keeping people in their homes. I want to keep the private sector as involved as they possibly can because you know what? It's going to take eight to 10 years to solve the crisis, and you take the private sector out of it, and you're ignoring that reality of 90% of all housing, it comes from that, that group. it comes from that group. I'm going to do everything I can to encourage accepting vouchers and to work with programs. And I like what Housing Authority is doing is putting agencies in charge of the vouchers who can provide the services that are needed to help landlords cope with the problems of mental illness, drug addiction, alcohol, and the other type of things. And I'll do everything I can to encourage keeping rents as low as possible. And I'm going to do this because this is my home. This is where my children live, my grandchildren live. And I don't want to destroy the quality of life that made me call this my home.
Thank you, Steve. Next, we have Mike Harris, then Eric Stevens, and then Tina Humphries. Next is Mike Harris, and then Eric Stevens after that.
So my name's Mike Harris. Thank you for having me, Council President and councilpeople. I'm 75, a vet, 67 to 70. I live at 55th Street Apartments. And this last couple of weeks, they handed out notices to everybody that they're, I mean, my rent's 800 right now, and that they're raising it to $500 to $1,300. I mean, that's, $100 would be a bite, but $500 is crazy. I mean, I know all these landlords are whining about it, but shit, somebody's making some serious money. One thing you're not looking at is, as this housing crisis goes, there's going to be an increase in suicides. I mean, is this going to happen? People are going to be so damn depressed and at loose ends. I mean, I make $22,000 a year, Social Security and two small pensions. And I just don't know where I'm going to go with all this. And it's not just for me, man. There's lots of people out there in the same situation. And so anyway, that's just my hope. My son lives in Oregon, and I told him about it. And he said, they have laws down there. You can only increase rent once a year, a small percentage. And I wish the state would do the same damn thing. But I appreciate your time and appreciate your patience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for coming down. Eric Stevens, and then Tina Humphries.
Thank you, city council, for allowing me the opportunity to be here today. I want to talk about two aspects of the ordinances that are being considered. First, the retaliation ordinance. And I'd like to reference Bill Gates. I read something the other day that talked about Bill Gates. And I think Bill Gates is a very smart guy. He said, if I see a problem, the first thing I do is look at other, try to find other people that have seen that problem. And then I see how they acted to resolve that problem. And when I look at 10.57130, the retaliation section of the ordinance, I have a real problem because that defines retaliation in a way that is very different than the state has defined retaliation. The state defined retaliation at RCW 59, period 18, period 240. They required the tenant to be current in rent, required the tenant to be current in performance of tenant duties. They, with 59, 18, 250, created a process to rebut a presumption. So if there's a presumption somebody had been retaliated against, there was an opportunity and a mechanism by which somebody else could counter that and say, actually, no, this isn't what happened. Here's what really happened. The reason that's really important is we're talking about this ordinance application in the downtown corridor. It's going to really hit the subsidized housing providers in the downtown corridor the hardest. And if there's a presumption or a charge that somebody has retaliated, it's going to freeze the landlord from taking action. That's going to expose all the neighboring tenants to whatever actions this person is taking. And if we have a bad actor and we need to control that conduct because that person's harassing other people and harassing their neighbors, driving them crazy, threatening them, this retaliation ordinance that does not follow the state law is going to create a protection for the bad actor. It's going to further insulate them from being removed. And that's going to be a real problem. And if you're talking about protecting vulnerable populations, you're exposing vulnerable populations in one of the most vulnerable areas, which is the downtown corridor and the subsidized housing area. So that's a really bad idea. And the ordinance would be fine, in my opinion, if subsections B1 and 2 were simply substituted with the text from RCW 59, 18, 240 and 59, 18, 250 respectively. You'd make that all easy. It'd tie into state law, and it'd be really a good move. The second thing I want to talk about is the rent increase ordinance, which is really rent-control light. And the reason you're hearing such opposition from landlords is because this is the segue for rent control. And rent control creates a deadweight triangle that there's not an economist in this country will support because it is not healthy for the environment. It's not in the industry. And it is going to lead to dilapidation of property. It's going to lead to market exodus. It's going to lead to less units in the market, which is going to result in rent increases. I can tell you, as a lawyer that's been doing this for 33 years, and all I do is represent landlords across the state of Washington and northern Idaho, my phone has been blowing up since this has been talked about with landlords talking about getting rent increase notices out now, building rent increase escalation clauses into leases. And this is a guarantee...
Eric, your time is up.
This is a guarantee for rent increases.
Tina? And then Brimo, I'm not going to try to pronounce your last name. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tina Humphries, and I'm a real estate broker. I hold a managing broker's license in Washington, and I'm a licensed sales agent in Idaho. I also own a property management company. I manage my own, and I'm on the ground level with people. I am one of the landlords that works with people, and my rents are very low. But that also puts me in a predicament because I understand that when we do talk about rent control and in the ordinance, you've listed out a 3% and your percentages. And I know what it's leading to, and I think we all do. And that's why people are raising their rents right now. Because when we talk about rent control, otherwise, I'd just be sitting there. I have low rents. I don't want to raise them. But at the same time, am I going to be able to sell that property in a few years when my husband and I retire? And I'm older than I look, so I'm closer than, hopefully. But I'm close to retirement, a few, you know, 10 years or so. But if my cap rate isn't congruent with my rents, then another investor's not going to come in and buy my property because my rents would be too low. And if you put rent control in place, then that puts me in a predicament. So like all of the landlords, we're looking at, gosh, do we raise our rents or what? Is that what we need to do? And if I do sell, it won't be to an investor. It'll be to a homebuyer because, like I said, an investor won't buy it. So that's one concern that I have. I also work with at-risk young women and single moms because I was one. And yet, it was tough for quite a while, and I worked really hard. My husband and I bought properties. He'd come home from his day job and work all evening on the properties. We raised kids. We still have kids at home. I don't think people understand the risk that you take when you invest. And to make it through COVID and everything, of course, I kept my tenants because my rents are low, and nobody wanted to lose that. I don't want to lose them, just like they don't want to lose their property. And I also don't want to have to raise my rent because I want my tenants. So what do I do? What do I do? If rent control's coming, then do I need to raise it and get it up to market rate? So that's what I'm dealing with. And for me, you know, and as Americans, private property rights are paramount. And I think that should be for everybody because the tenants that are here may also own properties one day. And we want the freedom to do with it what we want to do and hopefully provide a great service and make a few friends along the way and keep it rolling. But that's why property rates are increasing is because we're talking about rent control.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brimo, and then Robert Hutt.
Brimo Lep. Brimo? I was going to try to get online. If you're online, Brimo, can you hit star 3?
Robert Hutt? Is Robert still with us?
Robert, if you're online, can you hit star 3? Go ahead. You're unmuted.
Council President Wilkinson and council. My name is Robert Hewitt. I work with Greater Spokane Progress on the racial equity network manager. I'm also a tenant, and I'm also indigenous. You know, hearing some earlier people speaking about land back and this is a result of capitalism and colonialism, I, you know, find irony there with the performative land acknowledgements in the beginning and that sort of thing. But I guess I'll express my frustration on a meta-level that this entire process is performative and having, you know, people sing and dance to get a little bit of breathing room during housing crisis just for a basic human right that is housing. It's frustrating. My own story with rent, growing up in Oakland, California, Section 8. You know, as a child worrying about losing our apartment if my room wasn't cleaning up during inspection. You know, there's a level of anxiety being low-income that many people just don't understand how it wears you down throughout your day. You know, I live with my girlfriend, but I have three kids that I raise and a single dad and struggling. I pay my rent. I work hard. There's been times when I was in school, I had three jobs. And to have people sit here and whine about having to have regulation, oh, the rent might be raised if you regulate raising rents. Yeah, go ahead and raise the rent in an appropriate manner. That's what this ordinance is for. You know, I have a master's in urban planning from Eastern. This all echoes, you know, what did Mark Twain say? History doesn't repeat itself, but it does rhyme or whatever. It reminds me of the tenant situation in the 1920s in New York. You know, and you have to think further. This is a small step. This, you know, as someone else said, this isn't even that radical of an ordinance. I think that's what frustrates me. And the amount of people that are having these conversations behind closed doors, trying to make amendments, trying to do these deals to, you know, squeeze a little bit of money out of tenants. And the fear-mongering, it just reminds me of last year. How much of the fear-mongering came true from the tenant protection ordinance? You know, it's just ridiculous. And hearing these bad-faith arguments, gaslighting, people huffing and puffing about how they pulled themselves up by their bootstraps in a completely different economy, completely different time. Frankly, people back then did not struggle as hard as some of us are struggling now. And to imply that we are not working hard. So yes, this ordinance, I am in support of it. And I do hope that it goes forward. I hope that this is just a snowball rolling and that we do work towards statewide rent control or other progressive ordinances, just so that we can have a fighting chance, a basic quality of life. I'm not going to spout off the statistics and stats. I mean, plenty of people have talked about that.
Thank you, Robert. Robert, thank you. Your time is up. That ends public comment. Any council commentary before we vote? Councilmember Cat Card.
Well, first off, thanks to everybody who came down, participated virtually, shared their comments and concerns. It's really good to hear the input. I mean, at its core, and I've got a million thoughts, but really, at its core, I think what this ordinance boils down to is the city coming in and basically interfering in that tenant landlord relationship, but doing so in a way that sort of creates a mandate on the landlord that says, you know, because right now, with 60 days, there's going to be an increase. Look, let's just be honest. There's going to be an increase in rent. National, the national inflation tax due to our terrible monetary policy is one of many but obvious reasons for that. You are going to continue to see increases in rent. But what this does, I think, is 60 days sort of allows for landlords to have a much better perspective on what that rent increase should be. As we've heard, landlords really don't want to lose good tenants. That's costly to them. It's not in their best interest to lose a good tenant. So they don't want to raise rents beyond what their tenants can afford or what's even reasonable. But when we're saying you have to make that decision based on worst-case scenario, six months out, then of course, you have to think about all the things that could come down the pike in those six months, real or not. Now, potentially, you could roll that rent back. I don't think there's anything that would prohibit that, but that's probably unlikely to actually occur. I think there was a great point made earlier about the six-month notice, and where would the tenants go? We do not have vacancies. They can get on waiting lists. And so, but there's no guarantees that they would find something in that time or that it wouldn't come available, say, three months early. And then they're faced with perhaps trying to get out of their existing lease. So I mean, there's a lot of things that, it sounds reasonable. It sounds good. And I think if it was just on its own, without all the other immense regulations and endless taxes and endless fees that we put on things, I think on its own, this makes a lot of sense. I think 90 days is probably a lot more reasonable. But frankly, I wouldn't balk at the 180 if we didn't have everything else compounding the issues. But the number one thing we need to focus on, and it's been said over and over tonight, and it's been something I have said ad nauseam for five years. We have a housing crisis. Let's build housing, okay? We should not be talking about moratoriums. We should not be talking about housing bans. We should not be talking about rolling back our development code. I had a meeting just today to push back on ideas that would roll back our development code, make housing more costly. These are not the things we should be looking at, okay? So if you really want to see lower costs, we need to significantly increase supply, significantly. Somebody said 4,700 units. Try 25,000, okay? We need a significant infusion of housing. We have not really spent much of our $1,590. We don't even really have a quality plan for our $1,590, okay? You can look for, if you want to contemplate why housing costs in Spokane have gone up. Obviously, there's a national market and a national economy that affects everything. But locally, I mean, just think. We have advocated for stricter energy codes that raise the costs. We have advocated and passed higher GFC fees. We have increased utility fees. We have had years, now this precedes, I think, just about everybody on this council, but we have had years of terrible development policies. I think we, single-handedly, helped to create this crisis by making it so hard to build housing. And to this day, we still don't have a very good permitting process to make this a real attractive place for those who want to provide housing to come and build. Those are the things that would make a significant difference. I'm extremely proud of Boca. I think that is something that is going to help us immensely as long as, again, it doesn't get rolled back. And I think that having the opportunity to add more housing, add housing across the city that's both rental as well as homeownership, you're addressing the entire continuum of housing, that is really, really important stuff. Another issue, obviously, that's led to this is the COVID cliff that was essentially created by government. I mean, yes, there were concerns, but the way we went about it created this massive cliff that has led to significant increases in these costs. And had that not occurred, I think you'd be seeing significantly less, fewer evictions and less rental increases going on right now. And I really do hope that, whether it's the tenants' union, the landlords' association, heck, maybe even join together so that there's just more trust in the outcome. If, this is going to pass, of course, so study it. Tell us, what are the impacts, six months out, a year out, two years out, three years out? Have those costs been more extraordinarily high because of the six-month or not? Am I wrong? Show me. Show me the data in a couple of years. And if we have seen increased costs, I would hope this council would be open to rolling this back to something more reasonable or looking at other regulations that might be imposing those additional costs. Lastly, I think, you know, this really is, in some ways, an opportunity for bad landlords to, again, raise that rent. And it's a detriment for the good landlords who really want to keep rent reasonable. You know, there's a lot of things that just make housing expensive that are well out of our control, from the maintenance costs, again, the national inflation tax, as I call it, because that's truly what it is. You know, it just doesn't matter. But trying to imagine, I mean, just this morning, or just an hour ago, we passed a levy to the ballot that would probably increase rent significantly, especially on single-family homes, if it passes. And that's something landlords have to take into account. I support the parks levy that someday will get voted on. And that's going to be an increase that they'll have to take into account. We know we're going to take the 1% because, God forbid, we don't take that one time. So there's another increase that they're going to have to account for. We don't know what the legislature is going to do next session with codes, with taxes, with anything. That's always a dangerous time for the state. When they are in session, we don't know what those costs will be and we, landlords have to factor all of those things in. And so it's really important, I think, that we think about all the different externalities as well as the things that we can control. And again, I went through the list. Why do we advocate for things that make housing more expensive? Why do we increase fees at a time of a housing crisis? Why do we, you know, think and talk about housing bans? These are things that make housing more rare, more expensive, harder to obtain, and we shouldn't do it. So I'm going to vote against this because I don't believe that, you know, we should get into a situation where we are potentially increasing the cost of rent by forcing this mandate. But I would love to see a way that landlords and tenants could agree upon, hey, when my lease comes up, I want a 60 day with a little bit of a less increase, or I want a six month so I have all that time with a much bigger increase. That'd be great. Write that into the lease, have that be a conversation at the start. But I don't think that's the place for us. I do not want to be in a situation where I am the reason that rent has increased, the reason why a tenant is evicted, why a tenant can't find housing. And that's my fear ultimately with this and just the pile on of regulations that we've seen, whether it's the Landlord or Tenant Act last year, part of which was really good, again, imposing more costs. We have a fee on housing as a result of that. We have more mandates on quality housing, which is good because we want to take care of tenants, we want them to live in quality housing. But all that stuff costs, costs more money and the cost of the maintenance goes up. But there's more regulations, more things piled on, more fees, more taxes. We've never seen a tax around here that we didn't love. So it's, it's just never ending. So you can't just think it's the evil landlord or it's just that, there is so many things that come in. And so more notice, that's great, but I think the ultimate result will be that there will be some higher rents. And again, I hope landlords, tenants work together, look at the data, provide that data to us on an ongoing basis so that we can see the impacts of this.
Councilmember McClitzy, before you speak, there was a glitch in there. There's one more person online.
Yep. Liz, can you hit star three? All right, go ahead, you're unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Awesome, thanks so much, you guys. I've been on the call night and I really appreciate you taking my testimony. I have watched our legislative body here argue with each other for the legitimacy of your own timeline all day, at briefing, at the council meeting tonight, but we are working to create a new law for an industry that you guys don't work in. So it's just, it's been a really tough day to watch this group. Again, briefing and legislative have just, you guys know me, my, my terms, it's been a hot mess express all the way around. It seems like it would be a really good idea that if anything changes, whether it be a timeline for voting or an amendment, that maybe you guys could also give more notice like you are asking property managers to give notice to renters. I know that we've seen so much testimony tonight from both sides of this issue because the necessary community and stakeholder engagement did not take place for this ordinance, which I hear you guys say all the time, community engagement, we are working for the people, we are working for the community. You guys did not work with the community on this one. Costs are going up for everything, everything is getting more expensive, wages are not matching increases, and all of us are struggling. The real estate market cannot shoulder that burden alone. We are in desperate need for more housing and more regulations on the housing market will only make things more difficult. If you're really interested in helping the housing market, I would really ask that you seek creative ideas to incentivize the housing market rather than penalize the industry. And thank you again, you guys, for calling on me.
Thank you, Liz. Councilwoman McClitzy.
Thank you, thank you for everyone who came out to testify tonight. I have to say, I've been a homeowner most of my life, or my adult life in Spokane, but I was a renter for 13 years and I have never had a lease for less than a year. In fact, in 2006, when I found an apartment I really liked, I was able to negotiate a four-year lease. That protected me from rent increases and it protected my landlord from having to find a new tenant for four years in a brand new spot. So I have also never had more than a 10% rent increase. And as somebody who's worked for nonprofits all of my life, some of your stories about your 40% rent increases, my watch was letting me know that my heart rate had spiked. What you have gone through is something I have never experienced. The closest I ever got was when I had a VA loan on a house I was buying and I had offered a full price offer and the VA appraisal came in $20,000 under my bid and I had already given notice at my rental property. And so I was in a situation where I could have been without a house when I had an 11 year old and a nearly two-year-old and I didn't know where I was going to live if these sellers balked at my offer. Luckily, I was at the bottom of the housing market and they, they took my offer. It was kind of a miracle. So I've been incredibly lucky and I can't imagine going through what you are all going through. And I think I've said, when I was running for office and a couple of times at this dais, that I had a lot of opportunity in Spokane in my twenties and thirties where this was an affordable place to live and you could really make a good lifestyle for yourself even at a nonprofit income, and I want that for every single person here. And I don't think that we can offer that right now, and that's really frustrating. We talk about when the housing crisis started. I think the housing crisis started back in 2009 when the bubble burst and instead of bailing out homeowners, we bailed out the banks. And that started the, that started the ball rolling with these increases, when the, the ownership transferred from homeowners to speculators. And so here we are. We're, we're raising a straw man about if a renter of a, or a rental owner of a single family house sells, it might get bought by a first-time home buyer. I was a first-time home buyer once. I vacated a rental property to buy that house. So there's not necessarily a net loss there. We've always encouraged homeownership in this country. It's not right for everybody. It wasn't right for me when I owned my first house. I ended up switching to a rental because my lifestyle changed and that was fine. I came back to the ownership market later in life. But we have to have options for people and we have to stand up for what's right. And I think what I've heard tonight is that the burden for folks that get a 40% rent increase is much higher and much more compelling than the inconvenience of having to plan six months ahead for your investment properties. I own an investment property. I had a radiator break and ruin a floor. I had no income for months and I had to pay for those repairs. But that's the cost of doing business. That's why you plan ahead. And so I strongly support this ordinance. I think it's best for the future of our community and I think we need to have good plans or we're planning to fail.
You have the council commentary? Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, thank you all. Thanks so much for staying up late with us. As someone who's a longtime renter and had to find new housing because of rent increases, I imagine how much this notification would have changed my life. I've had landlords that I'm still friends with to this day, had some that I'm not, that's okay. Also heard with this ordinance that, you know, I've heard from landlords that the sky is not going to fall. We are going to make this work. I do want to address some misinformation, you know, around this ordinance. We've heard a lot of kind of philosophical opposition to more regulation and that, you know, building more housing is mutually exclusive. You know, we are pretty united on this council when it comes to housing policy. We approve so many multifamily tax exemptions for affordable dense housing. You know, we heard that, you know, well, you should focus on raising our height limit. You should focus on converting downtown commercial space to residential. I support all these things. And if you want to work on it, then let's get to work on it. Also heard that it took us a month to come up with this policy and the irony that we're asking now for six months' notice, that's a pretty good zinger, I have to admit, when that is true, the zinger, but not necessarily the intent behind that because 10 other cities do have similar language. The state had this in House Bill 2114 and we introduced this right after session ended. And many of those same stakeholders weighed in on this bill. And the bill didn't pass because of the rental notification component. It didn't pass because there was a discussion around rent stabilization and what that percentage should be. In terms of the private right of action, you know, there's no conflict there with the state RCW. Some of the concerns around downtown subsidized housing, a lot of that housing is exempt in this ordinance because those are already set by federal and state standards and budgets. If you want to take a, a look at the data, go ahead. Again, was in the spokesman review and we've heard this a lot tonight. Rents have increased in Spokane faster than in the state as a whole in the last decade, jumping from 47% from 2013 to, to 2023. So if you say, oh, this ordinance is going to increase rents, I got to tell you, rent has already been increasing in Spokane higher than the rest of the state. We also know that our number of evictions have increased significantly, 44%. Again, a lot of this does predate COVID. More than half of all renters in Spokane are considered cost burden. Since taking office, I've had numerous constituents reach out for rental assistance funds that were not there when they needed to move. And in talking with this ordinance with both tenants and landlords, there is a lot of common ground, that common ground there to advocate for rental assistance funds, which I, again, happy to do. You know, when, again, I took office, we had to prepare, scramble to prepare shelters and open more spaces due to life-threatening temperatures this winter. And it's clearer than ever how rising rent correlates with homelessness. And if we don't address rents, this will only worsen. When I spoke with Steve Corker about this ordinance, he asked me, how do you like the job? And before I could finish answering, he said, it's the best job in the world, isn't it? And you know what? It, it truly is. Despite some of the theater that you heard earlier, the theatrics, it's true tonight because we know that this ordinance will indeed help people. I want to thank everyone who engaged with our office on this ordinance, regardless of who you are. Thank you, though, for your advocacy. Terry Anderson, Do Rehima Williams, Spectrum, Angelique Tomeo. Thank you to my amazing legislative aide, Ginny Ramos, and council staff Nicolette Ocultree. I really believe that this is a good night for Spokane and I'm really looking forward to continuing this work. Thank you.
Councilmember Bingo.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so earlier, you know, I had, I had submitted a, an amendment on this and was advised that it may or may not be in compliance with state law. So I withdrew that amendment earlier, but the point was, there's a lot that we've been asking of landlords lately without really much in return from tenants. And that was the point that I was just trying to make, which is, for all the planning, everything that you have to do as, you know, a tenant, there's a lot of planning and, and thoughtfulness that goes hand in hand with being a landlord. You know, a personal example for me, when we talk about six months, the difference between two months and six months. So in December of 2019, you know, I had, I had built up this great business, was working my guts out, my wife was five months pregnant at the time and it was like, you know what? We want to slow down, we want to, we want to sell, maybe not, not have to work as much as I do. Went to my accountant, said, hey, you know, would you do a business valuation? We want to sell. And he says, absolutely. Why don't we wait until after tax season, though, because we're about to head into it? You know, is that okay? And I said, totally, you know, not a big deal, like our business, like what we do. And then obviously, the world shuts down and changes the trajectory of my life forever. And that's, that was a three-month period there. There's a lot that can happen in six months. And so I think six months is, is far too long for something like this. There's a lot more speculation that's going to be taking place in a, in a six-month time period than in a two-month or a three-month. And, you know, when this was first proposed, I had asked Councilmember Dillon, are you willing to move on the, on the number of days at all? And the pretty quick response was, nah, not really. And I was like, okay, well, that is what it is. And, but I think there was a lot of great points that were made tonight. You know, I understand that people are struggling right now and that's not just renters, you know, that is, that is all involved. And I, I thought Mr. Corker made a, a great point earlier when he talked about how this might affect the low-income housing. And Mr. Stephen and I, Mr. Eric Stephen and I have worked on some projects where, where we're talking about low-income housing and how do we protect low-income housing in the city because we're seeing a lot of low-income nonprofit, nonprofit low-income housing providers wanting to exit that space because it has become so much more difficult in the last five years to provide that housing. And one of the things we know, and Mr. Ben Stuckert from Slick would acknowledge this, that it is far more expensive for government to build housing than it is for the private sector because government has certain requirements, certain wage requirements, certain evergreen standards that the private sector doesn't. There's all kinds of things that make it more expensive for, for government to provide that housing, which means, again, if it costs more money, then that rent is going to be higher because, and has, again, everybody has said many, many times, this is a business, people are in this business and people are in business not because they want to provide a great service and never make any money. People are in business to make money, okay? And if the cost of a banana goes up at the wholesale, the cost of a banana is going to go up in retail. That's just kind of how business works, right? So every little bit, as Councilmember Cathcart was alluding to earlier, every little bit that we add on is going to be a small increase in rent. And some people are getting crushed by a $500 rent increase. I understand that. That's something that we need to work through and I'm interested in that discussion. This doesn't stop that, it just slows it down a little bit, right? Some people are getting nickelled and dimed in ways that it's just like, you know, death by a thousand cuts because government regulation has increased the cost so much so that it becomes, you know, impossible to provide housing at a, at a low rate. There's just a lot in this that I think is going to end up hurting the people that, that it's intended to help. And I, I, I appreciate the sentiment of this, which is, people are hurting, we need to help people. I think that's noble. I appreciate people on this council trying to correct that and trying to make a difference in that way. Unfortunately, I don't believe that this is going to help. And I actually do think that this might create an increase in less than six-month leases that, that could be an interesting turn of events. But other people have brought up other issues that happened. The difference between the eighties and now, obviously, the Growth Management Act, you know, is a big deal that restricted our ability to build housing, government intervention in the marketplace, again, constraining the, the supply while the demand continues to increase. So there's just a lot in this and, and again, I appreciate the sentiment behind it. I think it's going to hurt the people it's intended to help and so I'll be voting against this tonight.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, just one thing, Councilmember Bingo, that was an amazing impression of me, well done. But I did co-sponsor the amendment to have some reprieve with the 120-day option as well. And thank you, Council President, for bringing that forward, so.
You have the commentary? Councilmember Zepon?
Yeah, thank you for everyone for coming out. I'll be very brief because it's very late. I'll be supporting this. I hear lots of concerns, but looking around the state and seeing lots of other cities that have similar notification time requirements that we're implementing, I see this as a step in alignment with the rest of the state and a protection for renters.
Councilmember Navarrete.
So I was a renter for seven years also and was in the same boat. My rent increased by 41%. I have three kids and a dog when I was at my house. When I was looking for another place to be, I had to, you know, think about doing the application fee again, have the deposit for my pets, do the first and last month's rent, and I worked two, two jobs. And some of us don't have the privilege to just go get up and, and look for a place in 60 days. So I really appreciate the, the people that were here sharing the struggles also and also the landlords. And I appreciate the ones that are willing to work with tenants and I hope the ones that are, that are here that are willing to work with tenants, that you reach out that you reach out to the people that have spoken today. And if you're willing to work with them, give them a chance to, you know, to rent if they're not able to afford their rent increases that they mentioned at the podium. So I was happy to, you know, be one of the sponsors with Councilmember Dillon. I really appreciate this. You know, some of us have been in that boat, have walked in those shoes that we've been renters and we can't afford to, you know, like, put a deposit, huge deposit to rent. So I am one hundred percent on this.
Thank you. Councilman McCluskey.
There's one thing I forgot to say about Mr. Rolls's comments. I think we're all one hundred percent on board with every single suggestion that you made and happy to work with you on that. I know Councilmember Bingle has already been working on the office to housing and the height restrictions. And I think we're with you on that.
Well, again, thank you all for coming down, staying so late tonight. I will say, I'll be supporting this because I did sponsor the amendment. I thought one hundred and eighty days, six months was a long time. So I said I could support one hundred and twenty. But I'm also supporting it because of what Councilman McCathcart said. We can get data in a year or two years, and we could roll this back. I have said from this day is before we have made ordinances that after a while, we need to look back and see if they are being effective. If they are not being effective the way that we thought they should be or how they are impacting our community, then that should be reviewed. So going forward, this is not like the end. I think it's the beginning of a good conversation, a law to move us forward for this particular time because times are different than what they were from two thousand eight. Even from two thousand seventeen, before COVID hit, housing was an issue and challenges and lack of supply going forward. So I'll support this. I ask the community to hold at least me accountable. Two years, you come back with data that says this is not working, Council President? Think I'll still be around then? I will entertain the idea of sponsoring that ordinance to review this and roll it back. Prepare to vote. All right. Thank you all. We have a couple more ordinances that we have to get through, and then council will be voting regarding open forum tonight since our time is ten PM that we adjourn. Ms. Fister.
Ordinance C thirty-six, five, one, six is deferred to May sixth, two thousand twenty-four agenda. First reading ordinances. Ordinance C thirty-six, five, one, seven, establishing the Transportation Commission, repealing chapters four point thirty-seven and four point thirty-eight of the Spokane Municipal Code, amending sections four point sixteen, point zero two zero and four point sixteen, point zero three zero of the Spokane Municipal Code, amending section three point zero one, eight point three sixty-five of the Spokane Municipal Code and adopting a new chapter, four point forty to title zero four of the Spokane Municipal Code. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinance.
We got one public comment. That's Will Huelings.
Good evening. My name is Will Huelings, and I live downtown. I want to strongly express my strong disapproval of ordinance C three, six, five, one, seven. This is an ordinance that aims to create a citizens' transportation committee for the city of Spokane. While the stated purpose of this commission is to unify the roles of various existing transportation-related boards and subcommittees, I believe that its formation is unnecessary and counterproductive. The city of Spokane already has four transportation-related boards, the Bicycle Advisory Board, Citizens Advisory Board. There's a couple other ones. But I just don't see why we need to be creating now a commission. It seems like, since our new mayor has gotten into power, she loves commissions. You guys like these little boards and commissions, LTAC? I don't know what the new name is, but that's a good example. But my strong opposition to ordinance C three, six, five, one, seven stems from my personal experience with the Bicycle Advisory Board. So I wanted to get involved with the Bicycle Advisory Board. So I show up, what, a week ago or something here, to show up for the meeting? Well, the door was locked. I couldn't get in. And I was rather disappointed because, as a cyclist, someone that rides year-round, that you would probably want someone like me. I mean, yeah, I can't even get involved. So once again, it seems like you guys are limiting who joins these little commissions, you know, and it's rather frustrating because I would love to be involved with the Bicycle Advisory Board. But obviously, like, I can't. So my opinion, the creation of yet another transportation commission only adds another layer of bureaucracy that we don't need. So I just suggest you guys don't vote on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any council commentary?
Hearing item H one, hearing on interim zoning ordinance C thirty-six, four, ninety-seven, passed by City Council on March fourth, two thousand twenty-four, concerning the definition of public parking lot in Title Seventeen, adding a new chapter, seventeen C point four fifteen, to the Spokane Municipal Code, deferred from April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four agenda.
No public comment?
I think at this point, there's no testimony, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. I would ask for a motion to ratify the findings in the ordinance that you passed earlier in the year and to continue the moratorium.
So moved?
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any commentary on that?
What are we ratifying right now?
The hearing H one, Councilmember Bingle. Did you hear Mr. Wright? Comments?
Yeah, I heard. So this is on the public parking lot definition?
Correct.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, this was an ordinance that we passed on March fourth to define our public parking lots. This came out of a discussion just around our centers and corridors and that work plan. We got no public comments as Mr. Wright mentioned. We just need to adopt this to ratify their findings.
So it's been moved and seconded to adopt and ratify the findings. Any other council commentary? Prepare to vote.
H two, final reading ordinance C thirty-six, five, fourteen, relating to the Paper Cuts Code amendments, two thousand twenty-four project, making minor changes to the Unified Development Code that clarify government process and procedures aligned with legislative requirements and/or make clerical corrections in the Spokane Municipal Code, amending Spokane Municipal Code Sections four point sixteen, point zero four zero, membership seventeen A, point zero two zero, point zero two zero B, definition seventeen A, point zero two zero, point zero eight, zero eight, zero H, definition seventeen C, point one twenty, point one ten, limited use standard, seventeen C, point one twenty-two, point zero seven zero, center and corridor allowed uses, seventeen C, point one twenty-two, T, point zero zero one, table seventeen C, point one twenty-two, point zero seven zero dash one, center and corridor allowed uses, seventeen C, point one ninety, point four fifty, medical centers, seventeen C, two hundred, point zero five zero, street tree requirements, seventeen D, point zero one, zero point zero two zero, concurrency testing, seventeen D, point zero one, zero point zero three zero, certificate of capacity, seventeen D, point zero seven five, point one eighty, appendix A, impact fee schedule, seventeen G, point zero two zero, point zero four zero, amendment frequency, seventeen G, point zero six one, point zero one zero, summary of land use application procedures, seventeen G, point zero six one, point three twenty, notice of decisions, seventeen G, point zero seven zero, point zero three zero, development standards, and seventeen H, point zero one, zero point one twenty, alleys, and adopting a new section, seventeen C, point one ninety, point two fifty-five, public parking lot, creating a new use category description.
We have one public comment. Molly Marshall.
Molly, I believe this is you online. I'm going to unmute you now. Go ahead when you're ready. Unless that's not you online. Molly, one more shot. Are you online?
Any council commentary? We've kind of been through this.
I chatted briefly with Molly via email, and she had issues with the concurrency, if that matters to anybody.
Thank you. All right. Prepare to vote. Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our legislative agenda. Our policy says that we end council at ten PM. How many names are open for open forum?
We have twenty, more than twenty. And we sorted them at the beginning of the meeting to give preference to those who haven't spoken this month. I would suggest moving through the list, prioritizing those who haven't participated this month. And we'll see if we get a motion to extend the meeting.
Is there a motion to extend the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Councilmember.
Till we've completed open forum, is that the motion? For all? All or just the ones who have spoken? Well, I'm wondering what the motion is.
Or the ones who have not spoken this month? I think that's everybody up there, isn't it?
I'm good with all for the folks that are still here.
Same.
I am as well.
Which I don't think is everyone on that list, but we're here. They're here. Let's go.
So it's been moved and seconded to extend the meeting to include all those who are speaking on open forum tonight? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. With that, could we take a five-minute break, though? Five minutes, please. Please come right back.
Council President needs a break.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. There. Mm. Thank you all for allowing us that little brief break. We will now go into open forum.
Yeah. No.
We're going to start, our first speaker, if you steal the room, War Bear. Is War Bear still with us?
War Bear's gone.
War Bear's gone, okay, thank you. McKenzie, McKenzie still with us?
Hello, I had something prepared, but I, in hearing the testimony from folks throughout the evening, I just, I wanted to talk about the hissy fits that landlords have been throwing at you this evening. As this minor regulation has been put forward, their, their power is threatened in such a minute way that they can't handle it. They're saying that they have to raise rent. They're going to have to limit low-income housing, they're going to have to, you know, cut some of their tenants, and they, they don't want to, but they're going to have to. That's a threat. They're threatening our community because they can't have power over people who are low-income, who are on disability, people who are retired, students. A gentleman also touched on the fact that there will be an increase in suicides if we don't get a handle on the housing problem. Earlier this month, on April 4th, an older gentleman, an 84-year-old man in Oklahoma, set himself on fire because he was being evicted with his wife that had Parkinson's. He would rather die than go out into the street, and I think a lot of people in this community feel that exact same way. We are struggling and we need, we need more. I, Councilmember Dylan, thank you very much for, you know, pushing this out. I just, I would encourage you and all of the progressive members of this council to please continue to fight for tenants' rights, because if we, you know, leave it at half measure, we've seen how landlords will, you know, try and claw their power back from tenants in Spokane. Thank you.
Next is Will Huelings, and then Crystal.
My name is Will Huelings and I live downtown Spokane. So here in a couple of days, May 7th, is TCAP, the Church at Planned Parenthood. So you guys all know about that. So it's, it's very passionate to me because I've been going to TCAP, just like I've been coming to city council meetings for years. And I've seen a lot of things, and I've actually spoke about this, I don't, five or six times probably, the last couple of years. But I am still enraged and mad that city council created a noise ordinance, basically to, I take it, to silence Christians from showing up in front of Planned Parenthood. At times, there was four to five, sometimes 500 people out there, and these are community members from our community. We even had Councilman Fagan, we had a lot of well-respected people from our community showing up, and because they were interrupting healthcare, they got a noise ordinance created, which I guess is not enforced, which is good. But on May 7th, we're going to have it, and it's just sad, you know, that these Christians then got sued by Planned Parenthood for a million dollars. And, you know, but I just wanted to invite you guys to Planned Parent, or the Church at Planned Parenthood at 7 o'clock to, to experience the Church at Planned Parenthood. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Is Crystal Burgett still here? Crystal Burgett? Mary Ann Bornhoff?
It's worth the wait to talk to you guys tonight. Hi, I'm Mary Ann Bornhoff, and I've been a Realtor since 1995. I'm also a developer and a historical home specialist, and I love my job. I love it. I'm here to talk about something that nobody has talked about tonight. I'm sure you're probably glad to hear that, because this has been a very long night, and I've been here since like five. Given the current demolition of one of the most famous homes in Spokane called Mary's Place, near Sacred Heart, and in line with the conservation spirit of Expo 74, I propose that Spokane City Council adopt a policy of preservation. This policy would require a review of homes built more than 50 years old to explore potential relocation, and if not feasible, mandate savings of fixtures that are worth more than $500. Such a policy would embody the principles of reuse, recycle, and rehabilitation, ensuring sustainable development while honoring our architectural heritage in Spokane, Washington. Spokane's dedication to conservation and its architectural heritage is rooted in the understanding that true progress is achieved by not discarding history, which has happened in the last couple of weeks, by, by thoughtfully integrating it into the future. It involves a balanced approach that respects and integrates the city's history and its future growth. This policy not only maintains Spokane's distinct charm, but it also supports a sustainable and inclusive vision for urban progress. Please consider this, I beg you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Crystal Dobley? Is Crystal still with us? David Brookbank?
David Brookbank, member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. As the world watches, U.S. students are walking out and setting up encampments due to their school's complicity in Israel's genocide in Gaza. Walla Wallis Whitman College students recently walked out demanding ceasefire and investment from Israel. The walkout was cited by Gazans as an inspiration and example of global solidarity. Tonight, I ran into EWU President McMahon as she left the chambers. Last week, McMahon signed an agreement with Fairchild's 92nd Air Refuger Wing, authorizing EWU students to quote, "build relationships with members of the Fairchild family. This helps us get academic perspectives and recruit some of their students into the Air Force." In early October 2023, a photo showed Fairchild Air Force Base KC-135 sitting on the tarmac at Prince Sultan Air Force Base Saudi Arabia to operate within the Israeli field of occupation and genocidal violence. Students are protesting exactly what students protested in the Vietnam War, misuse of our tax money for war, use of bodies of students as cannon fodder, and rejection of complicity and genocide by their institutions. Having long facilitated campus recruitment, EWU is now sending students to Fairchild to stain their hands and consciences with the blood of imperialist violence and genocide. On April 22nd, SFCC students walked out and faced surveillance, intimidation, and threat by campus and Spokane police and members of Stand With Us. On 11/9/2023, Gonzaga students walked out. Nominally Jesuit Godzaga is the lead in a large capitalist-imperialist consortium to build an advanced military materials facility in the Boeing Triumph Facility in Airway Heights. The consortium includes Raytheon, Boeing, Lockheed Martin, Collins Airspace, and Blue Origins among the world's largest war profiteers. A long list of area universities and high schools are part of the consortium. We will continue to speak up, walk out, act up, denounce. This is our moral obligation, this is our political commitment, and this is a new generation's mobile, moment of global resistance. I encourage you all to say something. Say something. Show up with a sign. You used to be on the street corner. When I got assaulted by the Spokane Police protest in the war in Iraq, you were on the street corner, Kitty. I haven't seen you on the street corner.
Thank you. Corey Childs, and then Mike Harris. Corey's gone. Mike Harris? Dave? Oh, there you go. That's okay. Thank you.
So my name's Mike Harris. Thank you, President and councilmembers, again for having me, letting me speak a second time. This is, this is not about the rent disaster, but about potholes. I know you haven't heard that enough, but I don't drive a lot, but God, I see potholes that have been there for a year, and they're doing all these ramp things at the corners, but just put a couple crews on potholes only, that'd be, I appreciate it, and I stand with Israel 100%. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Dave Bilsland still with us? Sheri Barnett?
I live in Spokane, President Wilkinson, and all members of the city council. All right. I love that we have freedom of speech in this country, but what is going on concerning Palestine and Israel is completely a spiritual problem. First of all, it has been Palestine and, and the Iranian helpers who have constantly attacked Israel. From the day that Israel was formed in 1948, they have called it the catastrophe, and they have gone and repeatedly tried to destroy them from the land. Now, if, if a group of young people were protesting in the colleges concerning Hispanics, or blacks, or Ethiopians, or I don't know what else, it would be totally illegal. And they have instigated and done perpetuated trying to kill off Israelites. They have their deed for that land in the Bible and in the ground, 4,000 years' worth of history of Israelites, Jewish people, living in the land of Israel. I know that most of these kids have been taught that way. I, I even experienced it in college myself, that there's a lot of brainwashing towards socialism, but you will not find a country that's like the United States and Israel, where you have a freedom to think, and that's why they're so, they've invented so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri. Eugene Knowles, and then Andrew Cowley. Welcome, Eugene.
Eugene Knowles, been living here in Spokane since 2010. Here I go with my two-minute complaint, I always got to start that way. But I was, I always hope, it's a, it's a useless hope that we could leave Palestine and Israel and the war overseas just for one night. But I'm starting to realize it's not going to happen, so I thought about selling tickets to the convention in Milwaukee and Chicago and loading up all the people who want to go up there and run from the National Guard and the Chicago City and the Milwaukee City Police, because this is going to be a winner. I was there in '68, it's going to be a winner. Okay, the couple of things I want to say is, I'm glad you guys took off the gloves and went after the budget, but the thing I want to try to get in real quick is, I got here when Mayor Werner was here, it was kind of bland, and then came Mayor Condon. The guy had the wind at his back, and he got the administrative skills down. That's why he got the second term. That's just my view. Now we've got two mayors in a row who've got headwinds. The previous administration, from my view, lacked the administrative skills, but she, she turned into a mayor, but she lacked those administrative skills, and I think that's why that one or two points, you know, she didn't make it. Now we've got a mayor who's got budgetary headwinds, and it's, 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 what we're in right now is the end of the previous administration. You got to give this mayor two years before you can start complaining about her. She just got there.
Thank you, thank you, Eugene. Andrew Cowley? And after Andrew, John Alder, if he's still with us.
So, my name is Andrew Cowley, and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation from Spokane and all that. Since the Spokane City Council passed its resolution brought forward by Jonathan Bingle in support of Israel's apparent right to self-defense, billions in our tax dollars have funded the mass killing of 33,000 Palestinians, because that is the so-called self-defense of a colonizing power. Sustained protest in these chambers eventually compelled the council to produce a second resolution, a very generalized call for peace in the region that does not use the words apartheid or genocide to describe the problem, that doesn't lay the blame where it belongs on Israel and on U.S. global hegemony, and even stops short of using the word ceasefire to describe the only possible solution to the problem. It mentions that both sides suffer and endorses nice things like freedom, safety, and the sanctity of human life. But for the Zionists, that can be a matter of debate. So Bingle, who's repeatedly made his support for the Zionist state-clear, and who's running for Congress so that he can then directly fund them, he couldn't even vote for that compromise. This may feel like a disruption of business as usual to you, but we're doing the very least we can do in this deeply complicit country. Your influence exceeds ours, so please do the very least that you can do. Pass a ceasefire resolution. Providence, Detroit, Chicago, Oakland, dozens of other American cities have already done so. If you oppose genocide, then do not let Jonathan Bingle and his Zionist friends speak for the people of Spokane. We stand with Palestine. Ceasefire now.
Thank you. Next, we have Candace Correa.
President, members, thank you for allowing me to present for just a couple of minutes. My name is Candace Correa, and I'm a resident of District 3. I'm here graciously to ask for the city council members' permission to connect our family's residence to existing public sewer that currently borders our property on the south under CFU 3.6 A1C, because it is the best solution for protecting the sole aquifer in our area that has a high water mean. Since our situation is unusual and paradoxical, I sent an email in advance to council members and would like to refer you all to that email sent yesterday. I would also kindly appreciate a short follow-up meeting after tonight to answer any, anyone's questions. I will try to summarize our paradoxical situation really quickly and as briefly as I possibly can. My husband and I purchased a parcel of land in December 2021 to better accommodate my sister who has disabilities and a growing young family. The land sits in the county but borders the city on the south and is surrounded by city limits on the east and the west. Prior to purchasing the parcel, I called the city to confirm the parcel would have sewer and water since the county didn't offer any infrastructure to connect to. I spoke with a senior engineer at the city's building department, who typically authorizes connections, and he confirmed that public sewer and water existed on the southern border of our parcel and that we would be able to connect to city sewer and water. He said, he said we would actually be legally required to connect to sewer to protect the aquifer. We purchased the property based on these representations. After some time and commencement of construction on private sewer lines on our property, the county asked me to connect them with the city to confirm approval of city sewer connection. After some time, the email chain went to a senior official at the building department who said we could not connect unless we met one of the exceptions under CFU 3.6, such as A1C. This exception allows connections to protect the sole source aquifer. We looked into a septic system as an alternative, but were informed by several installers that an expensive mound system would be required due to the high water mean in the area and that they didn't install mound systems due to the high failure rate and potential to leak. Subsequently, the city informed us that we would likely have to disconnect from a septic system anyway in the next couple of years to protect the sole source aquifer. Federal, state, and local laws.
I know, we got your email.
No problem.
Yeah, Councilor, I was just going to say, yeah, our Director of Utilities got a copy of that, and I know that they're talking with legal and trying to talk to the county and try to figure out some solution. It's a very complicated issue.
It is, yes. Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you so much. Is John Alder still with us? I don't see John. Dennis Flynn?
Council President, Dennis Flynn, I live near St. Charles. A developed principled position allows one to express thoughts in a rational, adult way that may invoke reasoned debate with someone who has a different take. When you instead follow the current thing narrative defined for you by others, your expressed thoughts betray your immature foundation, and like a child, your tantrums against anyone who disagrees are rightly dismissed as so much barking at the moon. I've asked you in the past to focus on the business of the city instead of opining on Idaho laws or international affairs, because I'm rationally and maturely asking you to focus on that which is inside your domain instead of things over which you have less than 0% influence. The principled position behind this is you're public servants. We're the public who live in Spokane, so please serve the public. We're the public who live in Spokane, so please serve the public. My kids, who are transitioning away from dependency on me for everything about their lives, call this type of thing adulting. Conversely, there are those who demand you instead focus on international affairs of state to prove you're as moral as them. The unprincipled position behind this is narcissism or the immature view that you better do what they say, or you're not as moral as they are. The proof of the unprincipled position is obvious since narrow focus. The opposition of Arab, mostly Muslim, people who live in Gaza by the State of Israel, mostly Jewish. Notice there's no demand that you consider the slaughters of Christians in Nigeria, or the ethnic cleansing of Armenian Christians in Azerbaijan, or the Uyghur genocide in China, or so many others. While it may seem obvious, and indeed in many cases it may be blatantly obvious, which position is the right one, in every single one of these examples, I included their intricacies and nuances that would need to be deeply considered to come to a truly informed, principled position. And whether you have the ignorance of a child or the knowledge of a scholar, one simple fact remains, at the end of this day, this council has no business making any proclamations about Israel, Gaza, Uyghurs, Armenians, religious creed, or political ideology. Doing what you can is the way of running the city, however, is your business. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Luca Shani?
A good law of history is that if you ever find yourself opposing a mass student movement while siding with the ruling class, you are on the wrong side of history. This has proven true in every era, every time, no matter the issue. You haven't just lost the youth. They are already gone. The paradigm has shifted. In their tens of thousands, students have formed solidarity encampments at universities across the country. MIT, Harvard, Yale, Stanford, Berkeley, USC, Brown, University of Texas, Emory University, University of Michigan, and many, many more have joined the students of Columbia University in their resistance to the US-backed genocide. And I say US-backed, because that seems to be something everyone forgets of Palestinians. Even here in Spokane, Gonzaga has had walkouts, and in the past week, SFCC and Whitworth have staged walkouts as well. These students are the future. They make up your future voters and future leaders. Pay attention. History is being made now, and rarely is it so clear. The brutal crackdown on these peaceful protests is pathetic, embarrassing, and dangerous. Protesters are met with the deployment of snipers on rooftops, police in full riot gear, restraining, brutalizing, and tasing unarmed students, many of whom who are black, brown, and Jewish. They have held Passover seder alongside praying Muslims in solidarity. Even professors are being arrested. Economics and philosophy come to mind right off the top. I've learned how many of you are willing to look the other way for your personal comfort. I don't know what to say to get you to care about other people, but as long as you remain silent, you are choosing a side. I urge you to come to reason. What are you waiting for? What are you afraid of? Please take a stand and call for a ceasefire, a real ceasefire, and a free Palestine.
Thank you. Is Victoria still with us? If not, Dream, do you wanna come and speak? And then the last will be Jack Talcot, if Jack is still in the building.
The city is in a financial crisis right now, and we heard some talking from Councilmember Cathcart earlier tonight about how a lot of tax money is taken and spent federally. And I would like to point out that just recently, the Biden administration approved $26 million in aid to the state of Israel. Adjusted, doing some phone calculator math earlier this evening, adjusting for the percentage of the US population that is in Spokane, just the city, I, doing the math, if that was split up equally among population in the states, that's almost $18 million to the city of Spokane that we could do. We could fill budget holes. We could, you know, maybe move that parks levy more forward. We could do a lot of really good stuff with that money. But we don't, because that money goes to the state of Israel. Now, I also wanna point out something, that so far, 10,000 children, closer to 15 now, I think, have been murdered in this genocide in Palestine. And like, let's just stop for a second. To me, there is no situation, no previous actions, no, no weird, you know, complicated situations. Yes, all of these things have nuance. All of these things are complicated. You know, the history of slavery is complicated. That doesn't mean that morally slavery is okay. The history of the Holocaust is complicated. That doesn't mean that morally the Holocaust was okay. The history of the Israel-Palestine conflict is quote-unquote complicated. Morally, it's never okay to murder 10,000 children. Not in my book, anyway. And so, yes, we need to pass a ceasefire resolution. Y'all can be out here saying, no, we want our tax money back. We don't wanna send millions of dollars of our taxpayer money to this state that's murdering people. 97%, I think, of starving people in the world right now are in the Gaza Strip.
Thank you, Dream. Again, is Jack Talcot in the house? Hearing none. Thank everyone who joined us tonight and stayed till the end. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it, and he noes abstention. We are adjourned. Because of the lateness, please clear the chamber quickly. Yeah. I do.
Oh, you do? Oh, bummer.
Yeah. Please clear the chamber quickly.